Good morning, everybody. And first off, I want to thank Krista and everybody who helped set this room up and getting the breakfast. It's awesome. Second, I want to thank Regan and Dawn for getting the guys out for the de-icing. And thank you in advance, Dawn, to your team for the winter, whatever it may be, because of whether men kits still can't figure out what's going to happen. But so, thank you. I know they work very hard. And then also, one of the food items in there is a basket that we received from the Edlin, we said, and Dawn with all the little candy corns in it, so. So with that, we'll get started. So in compliance with state law, city council special and regular meetings will be held in a hybrid format with in-person telephonic virtual options for public viewing and participation. And with that, we'll call this workshop to order. And we'll look at approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes that we need to make, Regan?
No.
No? I mean, there's no extra money that?
Yeah, add the extra money on there.
Extra money. By the way, this is the collection place.
So we'll look for approval of the agenda. It's moved to seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye. With that, agenda's been approved and turned over to Regan. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I apologize for my scratchy voice. This is a result of the football game last night and too much yelling, so hopefully these will, recolons will help. So we'll throw this up there whenever, are you doing a case or? And Selena will be coming. She's profusely apologized, hit a little snafu this morning, but she'll join us in a moment, so. That's all good. Uh, okay. No problem. Jennifer, doesn't she want to come in here and listen to this?
Can I go in there and help her make bracelets?
Yeah. Alright, thanks Krista. I'm just not able to. It's early. We're getting there. Hey Debbie. Alright, now we're ready. There we go. So as we discussed, when we presented the budget, these were our, our strategies this year. Really, as a priority to really stabilize our core services. And gotta tighten in a little bit and increase public safety investment due to the exceptional rising costs that we're experiencing there for that and fund some infrastructure improvements. And additionally, our equipment needs. So we'll start off with going through the executive department comparative budget.
No, I don't mean to interrupt. Do you want questions after each department's presentations or during?
Whenever you like. Yeah, I think everybody's fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, so you have a question, feel free to ask it. Let's discuss it, so. So throughout these slides, you'll see the ones that I present here on each depart- department under salaries and wages, there was a 4.6% COLA that's included there under executive. There is a small increase as well due to some minor part-time hours that were added into that also. Other services and charges, you see that's where the other jump is there. That's due to increase in animal control cost, training and our maintenance agreement, costs that have increased. So going on to our personnel budget, again, the COLA is included in there and and our other services and charges, you see that big jump there of 90,000? That's due to AHA contract, the alcoholics and addicts helping alcoholics and addicts. And then Vine Maple Place contract as well. And just a reminder, that Darren's expenditures are out of, still out of, uh, Houseville 1590. So those are the only real changes there. Under executive decision cards that were funded was a town center marketing landing page. We felt like it would be a good idea to develop a page dedicated to town. Did you have questions?
No, oh, no, no.
Dedicated, uh, hi Selena.
No, you're fine.
We told everyone that aliens attacked and you had to do everything. Those always take longer than you think they're going to. No problem. So with, with this, this was an idea to really promote the town center. So as we talked about the town center, as we talked about a community center there on that site, a city hall, we want people to really know what that is. And so this will be kind of the depository for all that information, the progress, status updates that we can share.
Will that be part of the city's website?
Yeah, cool. That we can link to it. And then the other one, there is a platform for managing council, uh, meeting agendas and packets. This is in an effort to bringing on this platform that will save a lot of staff time as we reach out to other cities that use these services as well. It's incredibly helpful. So we're going to fund, that's included anyway in what's before you, uh, to help improve some efficiencies there. Unfunded are the same type of platforms, but one for managing meetings and the other one for managing commissions. Uh, just due to what we're projecting our revenues, we didn't think it would be wise to fund those this year, but we thought let's get the agenda one on. See how that works, see the efficiencies that it provides, and then those can be added. No formats would look the same. It's really the process that it goes through in-house to get the packet to you. Yeah.
Also, thank you Krista. Also, managing meeting minutes, do we really handwrite them and then transcribe them into Word? I'm just curious why they wouldn't. Typing is faster these days.
Yeah, so Krista, you want to answer that?
Out when she just puts food.
Oh, sorry. Did you hear Jennifer?
Yeah, we're not funding that because.
No, no, she's wondering what the current process is for minutes.
Why it's handwritten versus typed, since typing is faster these days. You can write faster than you can type. That's interesting.
And then I provide that to Joanie.
Yeah, I just wonder if there could be another efficiency there with typing. Yeah. But, you know.
There were some other things we looked into with that, with video system and stuff, but it added a lot of.
Doesn't Zoom transcribe it? Can't you put captioning on Zoom and we can go that route as well? Because I, not saying that, I'm not saying I want to punish Joanie or Krista by having to listen to us bigger. I don't know if you can print it, but I know, I know that there's a way for it to do the captioning because I've had to do it.
It does transcribe. I don't know how accurate it is, but it might be faster than.
I think that would take more time, actually, just because the verification, they would have to watch the whole thing and then transcribe.
The other thing with that is that I typically have a bunch of other screens open on my users though, to be able to toggle back and forth.
And our, our minutes are really just action minutes, so it's not, it's not like Krista, we're having to, yeah, we don't do that. We really put down just the action items, uh, so.
Yeah, we have everything on video voice anyway.
Right, so-and-so motion, so-and-so seconded. This is what they've enacted, so.
Just, I think it was mentioned in the booklet, but I don't know super specific about how much payroll we anticipate saving by making these changes. I'm, I'm sure it is significant. Uh, did we do a?
I wouldn't say we'll save payroll, but we'll save hours that can be used for other.
Well, I mean, to me, that's time that can be used for something else, so.
It's future payroll, right? Potential future. So this will, we looked at some other cities, weren't they saying between 30 and 50% of their of time savings that they were receiving through this program? So if we get that, that's, that's.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Okay.
So these unfunded items, which would really help, um, if come June, we see that our revenues is these unfunded items, do they have to be done at the beginning of the year with the others, or can they be done halfway through the year and added in?
They could be done anytime.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and easily addable to what we have.
Okay, so we can always look at that at a future date.
And, and I had kind of the same thought as I read through those, that if, if we did fund those two that we decided not to fund, could they potentially mitigate having to add staff next year because they are such time-saving? So I, just a thought, I think we're all kind of on the same board that those look like they're very valuable.
There, there's no, nothing in the budget to add staff that would do that work next year, so it wouldn't be that, but it did save time. Yeah. They're, they're good programs, so. Any other questions on that? Uh, in personnel, uh, no funded decision cards. They did submit two though. One was to hire a new community care outreach coordinator. That's a 38,000, one time and 147 ongoing, and then a human services comprehensive assessment at 27,000. After those were submitted and looking at, at revenues and overall budget with personnel, we determined that it's probably best and not a priority this year to fund those. Yeah.
The assessment, what, I mean, I read the decision card, but what details would that give us?
So the, the hope is, what, what I understand, and I think we, we did one 10, 15 years ago, something like that, and the hope is that it tells you what needs are in the community. And if there's any gaps that we might be missing.
But like specifically, what?
So what, what specific need would they look into?
That, that, that would be, I guess, part of the answer. Assessment that tells us needs is not enough detail for me to say, oh, yeah, I totally agree. That could be unfunded. What would we expect in detail? Like, are they just looking at specific needs, two needs, three needs, all needs? Like, I, I don't understand how.
It wouldn't be all needs, but I know it is somewhat limited. I'd have to know for sure, but you know, they, they'll look at income, they'll look at uh, mental health and homelessness, th- those kind of areas where are we providing the services that are needed in the community? But to get you a complete answer, I'll have to.
Yeah, I'm curious because I'm wondering what data they're using to, are they making just a correlation from this data?
Right.
Because it seems like it would invade privacy laws, right? So, yeah.
Uh, I will mention that they have $30,000 that's currently unallocated in this year's budget and in next year's budget that they were kind of holding on to to see if they had people that came in, like, we passed our rules and things like that. So one of the, the reasons that we didn't fund this one is because next year they, they have that $30,000, so if they come back to us and say, these are all the things that we want to look for, they do have that pot of money that they could use.
And, and I don't know that, that we would have a clear answer on that because we haven't engaged with anybody yet on what, on what that would be. So I'd have to ask Julie what their thoughts were hoping or what their hope was that it would accomplish.
Because it's not a time, but it's also if it's not super useful and accurate also.
Well, that, that was my first question is, do you think they'll provide information to you that we don't already know? Uh, right, and, and Julie's like, I don't know for sure, but it's been a long time since we've done one. And I said, well, that's not enough for me to answer. Fund it at this point, so.
Okay. Okay. I'd be, yeah, I could see it being super helpful, but I could also see it not, so, okay.
Did you have something, Beth? I keep thinking best raisin' a hand over there. I'm seeing things. So future significant budget issues, mostly what you're already familiar with is the salary survey that we did. There were a number of positions in the city that were around 5% or less below what their comparable positions were in other cities. So that's something that we'll want to remedy and make up for in this next budget. So we're working together to come up with some strategies in place. The best ways to do that, um, excuse me, sorry. Namely, uh, our salary ranges are about a 3% step where, um, uh, our comparables were about just over 4%, so their steps were different. Their steps were wider, so you, you had more upward mobility. Ours are, are shorter without as much. So we're working on some different things that we'll be presenting to council. We have reserved some, some money that's included in the budget that's before you. Before we got this salary survey back, we, we put a number of $150,000 in there. Um, but we don't know for sure what it's going to come out to be yet, but that's the main issue for these departments going forward.
Yeah. Regan, do you think that the COLA that you're proposing will bring, bring it closer into line? I mean, 4.6 is pretty close to 5%.
So, so different buckets. Um, so our comparable cities are also doing a, between a 4 and 5% COLA as well. So it wouldn't pertain to this gap that's there.
Alright, thank you.
So when you say you're bringing this back, is this coming back to us for this year's discussion, or is it going to come this year? Okay, good.
Yeah, we'll bring it to you. We just, we got the survey a week or two ago, and now we're trying to work on what the best strategy is to implement it.
But this will come back to us by our December meeting?
Yeah, we'll want it approved in, in the budget.
Perfect, thank you.
So council, court, legal and central services. So in city council, you can see a big jump there in operating transfers out. So this is really the, um, the pass-through account that we use when we're transferring money into different projects. So what that's made up of is 21,000 for the public art fund, 168,000 transferred to the street fund, and 250,000 transferred to our 516 and Covington Way project. And a lot of these are coming out of our reserve funds, like town center reserve and those, thanks Joe. And then, uh, 875,000 to CIP 1127. And then 169,000 to our, uh, 185th to 192nd project. And 61,000 into vehicle reserve. So a big job, but to really get those projects to the finish line, we had to pull some money out of reserves and transfer them to those projects. Another big bump you see there is in other services and charges, and that's where the skip and Vine Maple Place construction funds that you gave from 1590 are being transferred to. That's those increases there. Yeah, Debbie.
Okay, sorry.
Want to go back to that slide?
No, 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 I'm just quick question. On the salaries and wages, um, under city council, did that include the bump that we just voted on? Okay, because this was prior.
Yeah, and we didn't know what, what you'd do there, so we'll, we'll add those in.
Okay. Thank you.
So I thought in the blue sheet it said that that full amount was already included in the budget. And, and then, of course, it would be less than that since we didn't do the full.
Yeah, I did.
Right?
If it said that, that was inaccurate. So it'll be, um, what, another 300 a month per council member, something like that. Yeah, two something, yeah. Uh, okay, so in municipal court, uh, there's some pretty heavy increases there this year. Our court costs are going up 13%, prosecution 33% uh, increase. Public defense is a 49% increase, and then our jail costs are an 8% increase. So, um, you, you can see this is across the board. Our, our costs for things are going up and our revenues are not going up as quickly as what's on. Legal, uh, nothing really changed. Did you have something?
Oh, yeah, Joe.
Why are our court costs going up? I'm not hearing about any actual prosecutions occurring. It's, it's catch and release apparently with King County lately.
That's not King County court, that's our municipal court.
Okay, okay.
And there we are prosecuting 96% of our cases, so. Not 51, I think, in the county we determined, so. 51% of the felonies we send, anyway. Don't get me on that rant right now. Uh, so nothing really changing there. So in central services, under, uh, the central services overhead payment, that's the charge. What the, the costs that we charge to streets, development services and our swim fund to pay for services they receive out of our central services, uh, budget. Under salaries and benefits, you can see a change there. John Goddett, we pulled him, uh, his time out of parks and, uh, streets and swim and moved him into central services as he's handling fleet and facilities. So it, it services, uh, what he's doing is servicing each department, so that's where, uh, he shows up now in central services. Um, other services and charges, our WCIA insurance costs increased, uh, just over $53,000 next year. And then under debt services, that increase is for our lease of city hall, that increased just over $12,000 for next year. What's that?
Insurance increases 50%.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, these are way above inflationary numbers, so. So for decision cards in those, uh, four departments, any decision cards that, um, are submitted in those will be discussed a, a little bit later in the presentation under different departments that, um, have an overlap with central services. So future significant budget issues are, we anticipate, uh, needing a new website design, uh, kind of a rebound ramp of that. We, we did it in 2011 and then again in 2016. So we expect in the next year or two, that's something that we'll need to, need to bring forward, and that can be anywhere. Grab me from Ron Carlin, between 30 and 50,000, something like that.
Just depends on what you want.
Yeah. It could be a lot higher too, but I think our last one was high twenties.
Yeah, it was actually much lower because we just rebranded it.
Yeah, that's true. So anyway, any questions on those? Alright, excellent. We will go to finance.
Okay, for finance, um, not a lot of changes, just between salaries and wages between what was budgeted in 2023 versus our estimated actual, we see that little bit. That's because we, um, currently budget for one of our staff members to be 30 hours a week, and they're currently about 24, so that's just a little bit lower for us. And then the only other thing that we have of note is our other services and charges. You can see our, um, it's bumping up between the estimated actual of this year and the 2024 requested. And that's really our audit fees. So it's about a $30,000 increase over our 2023 budget for our audit. Well deserved. That was out loud, wasn't it? Um, special projects. So special projects, I just threw this in my, my department, I could talk about it, but this is, um, the ARPA, not ARPA funds that we were using and, uh, the other services and charges. What that is for next year is just made up of, uh, human services funds, the additional $150,000 that you guys that gave them over the two-year period. Uh, so 2024 will be the last year that we'll see any projects in the special projects fund and then this department will go away. And then capital outlay, um, the additional costs that you see between 2023 and the estimated actuals were our police AC costs. And those came before you, and that was just the difference of us, we just did some additional AC units at the police department, again, all covered under our special projects reserve funds. And then the transfers out, um, the transfers out this year, just as a reminder, we budgeted some things for the street funds to transfer to the CIP fund for the maintenance shop, um, some equipment that we did this year. We did a swim project, the Lilian Burger project. And then, um, we did a big Jenkins Creek, um, transfer for that project as well as the street fund. And then for next year, the 380,000 is just for the street fund. And so what I will note is, this is the 2024, again, is the last year that we'll have these funds, so that $380,000 that's currently being paid for out of special projects reserve will then roll back to the general fund to pay for. So I'll, I'll show that to you when we get to the, to the forecast, but. And then for decision cards for us, we have a cost allocation study, um, that was recommended by one of our auditors in 2019, which I haven't gotten to it for a couple of years, so, uh, we have plenty of time to get it done. It's not like it was we had to have it done within a certain amount of time, but we do need to get it done, so. And then administrative assistant, um, this is actually being shared between four different departments. It's community development, um, my finance myself, and then public works, streets and swim. So, um, we're all taking a little bit of a piece of this person to help us out with some administrative stuff. And then unfunded. And for us, for future.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Um, I noticed that last year we had also funded, um, the decision card for cost allocation, so is that money still in the budget?
We just rolled it forward.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then for future significant budget issues, again, it's increasing audit costs. Um, we don't generally get what the audit increase is going to be after our budget's already adopted, so um, I don't know exactly what that's going to be for next year, but they seem to increase it every year. And then potential staff increases with the BNO implementation, but we're assuming it's probably going to take about a half of TE to help us, um, administer the BNO.
Okay, uh, let's talk about the police department budget. As you can see, our, um, most of our supply, that doesn't really change that much. Uh, some years we have a little more, some years a little less, but the big change is the service and charges. Uh, our contract has increased significantly over the last few years. Um, I think when I started, it was 5 million. And now we're up to, uh.
That was expensive.
I am expensive, so you, you don't get what you pay for, no. As you can see, our contract has increased, uh, almost 9% with, uh, most of that's from KCSO. The officers increase for COLA was four. Uh, we've added body cameras, uh, insurance. And I think the King County has also devised more ways to recoup some of their costs uh, because they have a massive shortfall that they're predicting, uh, that has prompted cuts in the sheriff's office budget also, so. We are looking at, uh, that, that service number that you see there in 2024, we're looking at, uh, Flock cameras, uh, which are license plate reader, uh, company. And it does a whole bunch of other things, so if you have questions about that, I can answer that. Yeah, yeah, so what, what they are, are, um, they're cameras that you lease from Flock and you mount them in areas that you want to see where a certain license plate is. Uh, or you, and you monitor all traffic. So you have the traffic, let's say we put it at, uh, Kent Kangley and Wax Road. So you would need a camera pointing each direction of traffic. So you have the east-west on Kent Kangley, you would need one for each of those. Uh, and then you have north-south, you would need one on each side of that, so you'd end up with at least four cameras, maybe even six to get a turn lane. But the whole point of that thing is to capture the image on a license plate and then it checks that through, uh, NCIC, which, and WASIC, which gives you stolen hits. It also gives you, you know, there's times where you have like an amber alert, uh, silver alert, uh, missing, you know, any of that type of stuff, that would also pop up. And what happens is the officer on his screen has a webpage that they sign into that will alert them that that car is going through, and it is almost instantaneous. So it, it may take five seconds and then officer, oh, yep, that car is there and it's heading this direction. So they have that ability to do that immediately. You as an officer can input a plate. So let's say we have a, an incident where we're like, well, I want to see where this car is. You put it in and it'll, it'll tell you when it's one of the intersections that we have monitored by Flock.
And even searched by like, like model vehicle and vehicle color.
So a lot of times we'll get like, oh, it was a red truck. So we can search for red trucks and it will start spitting them out at us. Um, and then you can decide based on what it is. It, it can get pretty granular in terms of like stickers in the back. It'll let you search for that. So it, it's pretty cool, the tech on it. Additionally, beyond just the license plate readers, they have regular cameras that you can use. Uh, has gunshot detection, which thankfully we don't need. Uh, and it also, this is the part I think is most critical, is you can actually, uh, use this system to upload uh, other, other businesses or residents, uh, cameras. So if they have a, like, let's say, city hall has a camera system, I can't really look at it without Justin's authorization, but with this program, he can feed it right into Flock. We can have it as part of the camera system that we use. Justin could purchase a license plate reader if he wanted to, and we could then use that information.
It could be quite a network of cameras if, if the system is.
And that, I mean, it allows residents to do it, so if you wanted to put your Ring doorbell in there, you could. If you had security cameras, you could. If your HOA wanted to buy a license plate reader, you can put that in. Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
Where does all that data go?
So it, it's all, it goes to the cloud and they, and Flock retains it for 30 days.
Well, I'm just.
And then they.
That's a lot of data.
Yeah, and then they dump it, so they don't, they don't hold on to it beyond 30 days.
Okay, yeah.
Because they don't, it's not worth it.
So one of the cities in King County had this, the flock, several.
had this, the flock several years ago and they did a presentation at S C A. And it helped them recover a lot of stolen vehicles. I think this was prior to COVID though, when we had the presentation, but I can't remember which city it was, but they said that it enabled their officers to do a lot more uh work or not, enabled them to complete more. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a very nice investigative tool. So one of the other benefits is Kent has it. I know Auburn is looking at it. I think they're like right at that hurdle. Uh, Des Moines has it. They're, they're starting Taquilla. Um, we can also network in with their stuff. So like if, if we have an incident, we can actually, it'll ping us and tell us if it goes through Kent's intersections. So then we can then potentially investigate it with their stuff, which is kinda cool, cause we don't have to go then ask. Uh, cause that, that's always the next day. You don't do that immediately. Um, so that, that part of it, it's kinda scalable in that you get to use everyone. Um, and I, just to give you an example, Kent had one this summer where their cameras alerted them to a suspect vehicle in a shooting. Which they subsequently chased to Brenton, Maple Valley, Covington, and wrecked on the top of highway eighteen. Where they were able to make an arrest on what ended up being a homicide. So like that type of uh redebil, like they would not have found it. The officer told me, oh, we wouldn't have found it if the camera hadn't told us it was going this direction, which was right toward one of them. So they were like, I wasn't really looking at that at that point, cause they were doing, trying to get to their perimeter spots and then it comes by. So then the chase is on. So um, again, you know, you have the amber alerts, those, you know, you catch one of those, like that's invaluable getting their kid back to their parents. Uh, you know, the silver alerts where uh someone has Alzheimer's out driving around, those, those type of things, it's, it's great for. Um, but like I said earlier, you can tap it into the business community, like Fred Meyer could give us access to whatever cameras they want. Uh, they don't have to, but they get that option and it's something that would assist us in doing policing in their area. Um, and it's the same with HOAs, you know, you can also, you can also register your camera so that if there is an incident on your street, let's say you don't wanna give us the feed, which I totally understand. Uh, then you can register your door, ring bell or ring doorbell or whatever cameras you have so that we can contact you quickly. Uh, you just put in like a phone number and email and we can say, hey, we had an incident at this date and time. Uh, and then we can give you the link to evidence dot com to upload it. Um, so we would, if we find something that's valuable, we pull the evidence off and put it into evidence dot com. So that flock doesn't have to routine it, cause you're right, that, that's a lot of data to routine.
I'll, I'll mention one thing, um this flock system's kind of come at us kind of in the eleventh hour. Uh, in fact, even after the budget was put together, so I, Clark, you just threw in fifteen thousand for it. It, um, with the number of uh cameras, it'll probably be more than that, but um we're just not at that point yet. So that's why it's just fifteen thousand that's thrown in there.
Well, I wanna go back to the other services and charges. So the increase there, seven, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand. So we have what, two vacant officer positions?
Three, yeah.
Three. Is that included in that six point four million that we're still paying or it's just sitting, are we paying King County for the open spot?
So what, what we, what the way King County does it is you pay for the full freight of your position and then they refund you the money. Uh, which.
We do reconciliation at the end of the year. They pays back, but.
Not all of it.
It's not, it's not any.
Overhead of what we pay, cause for each officer, we pay overhead for county administrative offices and things that are happening. They keep that portion of it. Yeah, we've thrown a lot of bits about.
And, and we're paying a lot of overtime to fill those vacancies, so it eats up. We don't get a lot back during reconciliation, I'll just say.
Isn't it pennies on the dollar that we get there?
Well, because we, we would get it all back if we weren't backfilling it over. It's not like we're seeing a big cost savings of three less officers.
So that, that includes, we can pretty much assume that's what our outlay is gonna be regardless of whether they're filled or not. Can I go back to the camera thing for a moment? So is it, does it take the picture of the front or the back plate?
It, it does, it does usually the back plate. It just depends on what direction it's going, so.
Okay.
Um, they, they, and it only gets the license plate. They're not interested in what's in the car.
Um, yeah, I just.
Cause there's a privacy concern that people have with the government taking photographs of your car, which I totally understand. Um, so yeah, it only, it, its whole mission is your plate, so um it, it'll take front and back, cause some people take their plates off or some people with Teslas uh don't put the front plate on, cause it's not as nice. Um, looking, I, I've had people complaining about that, so just throwing it out there. But um, yeah, so yes, some people take their license plates off. We can still search for the kind of car it is, so if we know. You know, it's a Honda Pilot, we can search for the Honda Pilot, uh, and then potentially come up with it and find, oh, yep, that's the one. It just takes a little bit longer if it doesn't have a license plate.
And then the ring, the ring tying it in, that really isn't like often not licensed plate, cause people are. It's usually a physical person that's coming to your doorstep, but the a lot of them aren't high quality enough to wear. It's just a dark car.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it, that's exactly right. It's a lot like a toll camera. Yep.
Yeah. I, I will say, um, as a contract city, we are waiting for authorization from King County on this. To get the council and executives sign out, which we've not gotten yet. I think they've actually pushed back on it a little bit. Uh, C taxman trying as well, but I think we're getting there. Um, so, but yeah, I, I think we'll get that.
But that's a hurdle we gotta. Yeah, half the contract right now are very, very interested in.
Yeah.
Could we reach out to our council members?
I, I think talking with Reagan would be helpful, yeah. There are some contract cities that don't want them and don't think we should have them.
But that would be a just, like, we could make that.
It should be, but sometimes the county doesn't think of it that way.
So just back to the question on the vacancies. So we are budgeting as though we could fill those vacancies and we'd be um we'd have our full headcount that you need right now.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we pay for, like, we have eighteen right now uh that we pay for, so we're paying for eighteen. And then they give us a refund of whatever we don't spend, so. Uh, so right now, we have two vacancies on patrol, so uh and those vacancies incur overtime every time their slot comes up. And so that overtime chews up the savings that you get back from that officer, so um like.
Oh, well, if you wanna, yeah, go for it.
Six hundred fifty thousand dollars for those three officers that we pay. Um, we got a credit last year, two hundred sixteen thousand back, um but our overtime was a hundred sixty one thousand, so that eats into that six hundred fifty. Then they keep their um their overhead charge and then they pay the overtime and then that's what we get back. Why is such a gap between two fifty and six fifty? Um, but the overtime, that's about a hundred sixty.
The overtime is a hundred sixty.
And the sense of overhead.
Like, it's in that line. It's a lot. That's a revenue.
Yes, that includes like.
I was like, I want some of that. That's their vehicle.
Yeah, their vehicles are all the equipment that they have. Right, so sometimes we have their vehicle.
But.
At our facility.
We need to have everything available.
Right.
Right? So we need their car available. We need, you know, unless we eliminate the position entirely. Otherwise, we've gotta keep all their equipment in view.
This is a ghost vehicle we're paying for.
We, we actually have, yeah, we actually have, we do use it occasionally, so let's say an officer's vehicle goes down uh or needs to repairs or whatever, they will use the extra vehicle. Uh, cause they prefer to have the Covington branding on the side as opposed to sheriff's office branding.
Isn't that part of the contract? Like, what if we do have twenty one officers and somebody needs a vehicle repair? Is that not, are we paying?
We are paying for that and we would get a loaner from the shop, but it would be, it'd be a King County, King County owner. So would say it would have the sheriff on it, it would not have Covington.
But, but you, you're right, it's a vehicle that we're holding, whether we use it once in a while or not, we're holding it for a vacant position.
No, thank you.
You get your question answered?
Right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for?
And more.
Hit the button. Okay. Uh, we have a decision card here. We, our, our doors at our station are keyed. Um, this would eliminate the need for keys with sonatrol. Um, our doors also need some work. They come loose. Uh, we've had a few people enter that um didn't belong in there, uh to include one we had to arrest. Um, so we don't want that to happen anymore. Uh, poor Johns had to be out to look at that door probably a dozen times, so.
At least I made an use for you to.
Well, he, he had yelled at the officer for about forty five minutes. The officer went to a call, came back and he was just sitting in our office. It's like, I'm glad he didn't do any damage, but it's like, what were you thinking? That's the last place I would go to, to confront the police officers, but um there's some other decision cards we'll talk about later that um have to do with uh the police and public safety. Um, some of our future significant issues, uh, we do need some more security upgrades at our department, uh, cameras. And uh the door is a definite step in that way. Uh, maintenance on that building, uh, we've greatly overspent our maintenance budget this year, which is fine. We have other things we can pull from, uh, and we have some stuff that's probably in need of repair. Um, we obviously have more growth uh with Lake Point coming on, so there'll probably be a need for more officers. Uh, we also have overtime cost issue uh with our two uh officer minimum. So that drives some of the overtime, like at night, uh, it's a lot harder to get somebody from to work midnight to six, but we have to pay overtime, cause we have a vacancy on graveyard. Um, we also have King County's uh issues, which include fair share. I can go into how that works, which is kind of a mess. Um, they have a, a percent range. They want all the contracts at, so right now it's between eighty two and eighty six percent and they try to hold you in there. Uh, sometimes some contracts get to go over, sometimes some contracts are below. Um, we're right now at eighty two or yeah, eighty two or eighty three. Um, and if we grab another person, we'd be at eighty eight, so uh getting another person's a lot more difficult. You have to fight a lot of battles to get that. Um, so it's been kind of a problem, which because we don't have those officers, we incur a lot of overtime. Um, and then lastly, the contract with K C S O obviously keeps getting a lot more expensive.
With the overtime, that's our officers, is there burnout and fatigue because of it?
Um, if you ask King County, yes. Um, our officers, actually, our officers are really um, we have a good group of go-getters and they don't seem to mind. I mean, you get extra money, so not for nothing, it's not free, so.
Well, I just worry about, you know, family and, and life and mental health and fatigue and everything.
We're not mandating it.
No, actually, yeah, we haven't, we probably with at least southeast, so you have Maple Valley, uh Newcastle and unincorporated, I think we mandate the least. Uh, a lot of that has to, our officers like to work here, um, which is, is not always the case everywhere. Uh, they like working here, they like to make sure the city is taken care of, so they do make every effort to be here. I have two, two officers in particular that work a lot of overtime. Um, they don't have the family issues. One's older, uh, doesn't have kids around anymore and another one's young, doesn't have a family yet. So they put in a lot of overtime and they, you know, one's nearing retirement, one's just building the piggy bank for, for later. Uh, cause trying to buy a house at eight percent mortgage rate doesn't sound fun, but um, so I, I am blessed with that. Uh, we had a few more that they'll work a fair amount also, so um and then they actually generally have us covered. Uh, and the addition of the sergeant has also helped in that he's a lot more able to focus on making sure our, our spots are filled. He's doing a great job at that so far, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Stretching? All right. All right.
Okay, community development. So in community development, we have two um different budgets. We have community development, which is our, out of our general fund, and we have development services, which covers all of our permitting, construction, development review. Um, so we'll kind of run through this and, and can answer any questions. So what you have here, so um, this is in the community development department. Um, one thing just to highlight here, uh, is that our estimated actuals are a little bit lower um than budgeted because of splits with code enforcement officers. So we brought on um Chris last year. She is in the, the code enforcement office division. Brian is the lead there. He's out of the general fund. She is split between development services and um the, the general fund budget. And then also the other services and charges, um, those decreased a little bit, um, just due to the reduction of the comp plan grant and completion of the climate action grant. So last year, we put the whole one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars into the budget last year for the comp plan grant. Technically, it's a biennium, so we spent sixty two down last year. We're gonna spend sixty two this year, so you'll see that moving forward. And then we had an eighty thousand dollar climate action grant that we completed last year. And I, I just will mention that those numbers may actually change, because we are going out for a series of grants now um that we probably won't have until next year, so um, but that's good news, right? Um, cause that's paying for, for work that we otherwise are, it's offsetting consulting costs basically. So then in our development services fund, so this is the fund that oversees um all of our permits. Um, our permit center, anything that's construction related, development review. Um, in this particular one, under salaries and wages, uh, something that that did change is that we've removed out the development review engineer. So that was a position I had been holding for a really long time, um advertised for the last couple years. Um, have not been able to fill. As you may have seen the latest Seattle Times, there's a huge shortage in the state and you can make a lot of money being an engineer right now. Um, and then uh the other thing is other services and charges. The drop from the twenty twenty three budget to the twenty twenty four is the school mitigation impact fees. So if we had previously budgeted, thinking that we would be getting school impact fees, then they did a zero last year. Um, we're more aware of it this year, so we won't have that moving forward, but um we ultimately didn't collect those fees, so. That shows up here and while it's a pass through charge, we still account for it in the budget. So a couple of decision cards that we have before you, um, the legislative mandate funding, um, I put about a hundred thousand dollars in that fund. There is, oh gosh, I think like eight legislative mandates that were passed last year in twenty twenty three. Um, as I mentioned, we're trying to go out for every grant opportunity. We have to get those mandates across the finish line. Um, obviously Commerce hasn't announced all of those yet. So a hundred thousand dollars, I will just tell you as a little bit of a test of the wind of I think that will get us um where we need to be by the deadlines in twenty twenty five. Um, and if not, obviously we'll have more conversation about that as, as that time draws closer. And then the second funded one is, oh, yes. Oh, sorry, Joe.
This is just a question.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure you've already answered your question. Those eight mandates from the state were, you must, you must do this, but we're not gonna give you money to do this, right?
Well, I wouldn't call them unfunded yet. Um, they, they basically said, you, you shall do this and we will try to find you money. And um, what, what I'm finding, it's, it's actually interesting. I've had this conversation with Reagan. Um, you know, so like for housing examples, so there was five housing bills that we have to adopt by twenty twenty five. And we can talk about these during the summit um in January, but um they say, okay, well, those are the five and we're gonna give you fifty thousand dollars. Okay, well, we all know that that's not gonna be enough, right? We could do it for fifty thousand, but at what degree, what level um do we really get what we want out of that? So those are conversations we'll be having. Um, they, they keep telling us Commerce is gonna give us money, but we, we never know by budgetary time whether that's gonna happen. So my hope is that I will have good news throughout next year and that I'm coming and telling you we have grants to offset this cost.
It's barely funded, man.
It's a barely, yes, thank you.
I, I'm liking the optimism.
Um, but there are some that they basically said, like, we probably won't have money for you to do this. Um, you absorb it, so. More, more to be seen on that. Um, then, then the second one, uh, Casey already alluded to was the administrative assistant. So this position would support our development services division um with offsetting administrative um actions. So right now, our permit setter manager, she does a lot of admin work. Um, everything from managing our co, department contracts to uh various reportings that are required by the state. Um, all the way down to managing individual invoices for every project that comes in that we use a consultant for. That's not really her highest and best use of her time, um, when she's managing projects that are coming in. So our hope is that we can alleviate a little bit of that administrative work that's being absorbed by a few in our department, including myself. Um, to then allow actual work um to be done with, with their skills. And then the other unfunded one was the permit planning tech. Um, I think I've taken a run at this a few times. I'll probably continue to take a run at this. Um, but uh that one is not, uh, that is unfunded this year. Future significant budgets, this is kind of an overwhelming slide. Um, it looks, you know, it, it's questionable. Um, so the first one I just want to point out is the increase. So, so in development services, we have a very small staff. Um, so the first one I just want to point out is the increase, so so in development services, we have a very small staff. We have two planners. We have a a senior planner and an assistant planner and then myself, I actually am still doing project review and working with developers and getting projects completed. And um, and then we offset the rest of our work with consultants, so I have a tree consultant, an engineering consultant, a wetland biologist consultant, a geotech consultant. So all those like subject matter expertise are held under consulting contracts. That's very common for for cities of this size and and as I've said to Regan, I I think it's a good way to proceed because as you saw in Casey's budget, you know, we do this a lot, right? And and you're able to turn on and off those levers versus having to like let staff go or try to find work if we're having a downtime. But with that comes the increased cost and use of consultants. Their hourly rates are high. And our attempt in community development is to match at a minimum what we're putting out, we're getting back in, right? Development pays for development. And so something that um, we're gonna be looking at this year and into next year is really adjusting our fees to capture the cost of those consultants. Um, so we'll talk more about that in November and probably throughout um, twenty twenty-four a little bit, but just know we've that is a deficiency we've seen in our department in our cost, so we're gonna try to work to really close that gap. Um, I talked a little bit about the comp plan, um, they only give us a hundred and twenty-four thousand. Um, I'm dipping into some just general fund money that I had for Burke to help get us across the finish line there. So that that's that cost exceeds the actual cost of getting that work done. Um, as as Joe kind of pointed out, what'd you call it? Barely funded, barely funded? Um, and then, oh, sorry, we have ten, so so the state legislation kind of had Ted citywide policies. I've already kind of talked about the insurity of that, um, the fact that they're all landing June of twenty twenty-five. Um, that's something on our legislative request to maybe start to think about metering those deadlines. We'll see if the legislation takes that up. And then, you know, that's obviously just in general, you all know that that competes with your day-to-day work mandates, right? So um, the other piece here that I want to point out, which will, we can talk about future is um, HB fifty-two ninety is a consolidated permit process that we have to have in place by twenty twenty-four. There's a myriad of requirements in there, um, that first one, fully digitated and transparent review, we're doing pretty good on that already. Covington was actually kind of ahead of that than most cities, getting online and then especially during COVID pandemic. So we've been really working to make our technology work for us, right? There's some inefficiencies there, but we're getting there. And then also to make just everything transparent, what, you know, what do you, how do you work with the city of Covington when you come do development? So that's stuff we've been working on. Under this bill, um, they actually mandated new development permit review deadlines. They actually shortened them. So they said, cities, you have, right now, the way that this works, if, I feel like I'm talking a lot, but if this is of interest. Um, it, they, this, you have a hundred and twenty days to get a project out, so like a Costco, right? So the Costco comes in, we have a hundred and twenty days to get their permit approval out. That's not to do construction, that's just the underlying entitlement. That clock stops every time the developer has it, right? So if we do work on it for two weeks and then the developer holds on it to it for six, that's six week is six, six weeks is their responsibility. Well, under HB fifty-two ninety, they came back and they shortened those timelines. So they said, city, you have a hundred days to get a permit out. And then you have a hundred and seventy days. They give us a little bit more time if there's a public hearing. And so what that does is gonna make us also look at our processes internally, so that we can make sure we're hitting that. Because if we don't hit those deadlines, the accountability now for cities that have missed that is that you have to refund ten to twenty percent of your permit fees back to the developer. So um, and then we also have to do performance reporting with the state moving forward, so we're unpacking a lot on this bill right now, and sorry.
So, I'm hearing you right. Our costs are going up because we need to have uh, more consultants, which makes sense. And we need to review our fee schedule again, as we should, to make sure that we're figuring out development paying for development. So then, as far as the deadlines and so forth, to me, it seems like, are we at risk of not being able to hire enough consultant hours to meet those deadlines and then we end up having to refund that? Like, is that really a thing, like labor shortage for lots of workers?
I I I'm not worried about hiring the consultants, but the consultants support multiple cities as well, right? And so I think that honestly, the the concern that I have is the timeline, the duration, right? So what does that mean for our consultants? What it, what are they gonna maybe come back and say for costs? Right? If we're moving things faster, they've gotta, they've gotta turn their lever up, right? Um, I don't know that we're really gonna know what this, the outcome of this is gonna be until probably mid-year and end of next year when we put it into practice. Um, I know a lot of cities are very concerned about that refund piece of it. Um, I feel comfortable in that we did a fee study. We've always been raising our fees with the CPI. We're pretty competitive. I think people come to Covington to come to Covington. I don't know that they really come here because of fees, like we're a cheaper city or something. It's land availability, right? That's that's what what they're gonna come here for. And so I don't, I don't have a really strong, like, yes or no answer to your question, Beth, but I think it's a valid question that we need to, to be watching.
I will add on in addition to uh, fifty-two ninety. Um, there's a lot of other bills that um, require, that have deadlines of twenty twenty-five, planning bills, and that's why the legislative agenda, we're working to get those deadlines extended because we're all vying for the same all the cities are waiting for the same resources to get it done.
And that's my point.
Yeah, there could, there could definitely end up being issues with that.
Right, and then all of a sudden, then we're pretty much gonna.
By really kind of arbitrary deadlines that were set.
Correct, yeah, yeah, okay. And 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 I will say, like, you know, talking to my peers, there's some cities like for comp planning, they're like, we can't find a consultant, right? So I mean, it's it's a really big issue out there and then I I was trying to find the article before here, but like Seattle Times just had an article four days ago about the deficiency of engineering in the state. And that they can't even get state projects done and engineers, they're hiring engineers before they've finished school right now. So, I mean, yeah, it's a good time to be an engineer, I would say, um, but you know, so those things all play in. It's gonna be interesting, it'll be interesting, yes.
Somewhat related, but yeah, um, is there any government mandate over how you raise your fees or is that totally up to us?
It's totally up to us.
Great, thank you.
Yep. And and Covington has this year his- historically been a development pace for development, hundred percent cost recovery. Um, I think there are some applications we've subsidized, you know, like, like uh, pre-apps, things like that, that, you know, we provide a customer service level for, but yeah, we 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 can, we can slice this any way we want. Um, and then the very last one, which has been noted already, is just the health of our economy, um, and the housing market. Um, you know, at an eight percent, what is the ability for someone to get a new home, new home starts? The the good thing, which I think is is good for us, and then again, it'll, it'll reveal itself, is that in this last year, we spent, you know, we didn't have a lot of available lots. We had a lot of projects in the pipeline. So we have twenty-two active development projects in the pipeline right now, that have just been, you know, getting through the hearing examiner and all that good stuff that are now, actually, five of those are out to construction. We've got a few more that are going to a hearing. And as Casey mentioned on Tuesday, you know, by the end of this month, we'll have ninety lots on the book available for someone to come build a new home on. We didn't have that the last two years, so it is that ebb and flow. So it'll be interesting to see how those new home starts actually take off. And I will just say that we do talk to every developer and they're very optimistic and I will say in community development, we are very conservative. If a developer tells me that they are gonna build four homes a month, Kelly and I say maybe one, one and a half, right? Like, we don't, we we we've been at this long enough that that their optimism hasn't always been accurate, but we, but we do have those conversations with them.
Selena.
And that's it. What do you got?
So, I know you're trying to fill a position that you've been trying for a while, consultants are type, and engineers are hard to get. With Lake Point coming on and they're really pushing to get those, the northeast section built, are we gonna have problems with this now hundred-day turnaround?
Um, the way that, the way that Lake Point is right now, they don't have any separate agreement for us to treat them separately. So they'll go in our queue just like any other developer.
Okay.
Um, we've had some early conversations with them about, do you wanna pay? Do you wanna have special assigned folks to that? Um, they say they do, but then getting that traction part of the conversations kind of flatlined a little bit. Um, so we'll see. I I I also, because we have this backlog and and the dam is kind of opening up just within the city, um, there is, there is kind of a tipping point where maybe we won't have so much citywide, that Lake Point will be the the bulk of our work. So, you know, at that point, when they're the bulk of your work, that is kind of the work, so they should be fine, right? That is as far as being in our queue, but every developer that you talk to is gonna tell you they want something faster and that they're, and and sometimes they're willing to pay. Um, you know, I I have a, my my background usually, you do want it fast, good or cheap, right? But you don't really get all three, and so, you know, you get two of those, and so what we've seen when folks come in lately is that, you know, they want it cheap and they want it fast, and then we spend a ton of time in quality. Um, so we'll see, it's it's to be seen.
I'll add to a little bit. Selena and I have talked about this quite a bit, is when do we hire that development review engineer? Because we're going to need it. Um, and do we do it now, uh, in anticipation for Lake Point or do we wait until those permits are actually coming in and um, we just couldn't fund it yet because their permits aren't coming in yet. Uh, but we have, like Selena said, we've offered them, we will hire this person if you want to pay for it, because they keep saying, we want someone dedicated. You got it, send the money and it'll happen, but they've been really reluctant.
And that's what Black Diamond has, is they master development and they pay for that position out there, I think it's Andy, and to just oversee ten trails. And then the new Lawson Hills when that comes in.
Selena, what you're saying, you've already tried to fill that position and you haven't had any luck because there hasn't, there's a shortage.
Yeah, the development review engineer, I mean, we took that out of the budget, so if we brought that back, we'd have a bigger conversation. But I I wanna just make sure, Mayor, that I answered your question um, about my concerns with with permitting. Did I, did I get here? Okay, I did, okay.
Perfectly.
One more thing, so you were saying that if if the city starts the permit process and we work on it for two weeks and then the developer sits on it for six weeks, that six weeks comes out of the hundred days because it's only whatever, then when it comes back to us, we have.
Just the time that we have.
Just the time that we have it and that we're working.
Okay.
And I'll say, I would like, we're pretty good, like, right now at the hundred and twenty, we we hit that, we're we're maybe plus or minus ten or twelve days, you know, we're we're pretty good right now. Um, but again, that that's still not fast enough for anybody, um, even though we have these state mandated timelines. So, you know, and 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 I'm kind of the thing of like, okay, do you offer expedited review? But then once you do expedited review, then nothing is expedited review, right? That now becomes the review, but you pay a premium for that, so I'm not really willing to dip my toe into that that pond unless that's a decision we wanna make. Um, I feel like the 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 timelines, master builders lobbied for their timelines, they got their timelines. And then we will do our best um, to pull those levers, and if we feel strained, then I'm gonna have that conversation. You know, we'll have to, we'll have to have that conversation.
Everybody still doing good?
Yep.
Alright.
Just as sad as ever doing this.
Alright, public works, so start off with parks maintenance. Um, pretty much you'll see on that one, there's really not much uh, changes. You'll see across the board there. Uh, pretty much uh, uh, no differences in in that regards, the if you look at the capital outlay for this year versus the budget, that was the brush chipper that we got, and it was a little bit higher than what we had budgeted for. So that's pretty much what that nineteen eight seventy is. Um, some increases in our um, supplies or whatever a little bit. Uh, but that's, that's about it for for parks maintenance, not really uh, any changes in there. We go to street funds. So in that, um, we have uh, and the other services and charges. You'll see in there, um, uh, we have a little bit of an increase um, in traffic control devices in there. Uh, we're actually expecting to get about twenty-five thousand back from the school district and that was for the the signal work that we did at uh, one eightieth and two fifty-six where we did the um, basically the left arrow, um, so it wouldn't give one when there's a cross, uh, so uh, so that's, that's nice, um, we'll get that, but that's um, that'll help off- offset that cost. Um, some of the um, also in, let me see. Is that in? Yeah. So also in there is a portion of um, the pedestrian bridge study getting started. So that has a grant associated to a five sixteen pedestrian bridge, so that consultant, there's about a hundred and sixty thousand of that uh, in the estimated uh, actual and then going, going forward. Then we also have in the operating transfer out, the six hundred and seventy-two thousand, that's actually the pavement preservation funding that we have um, uh, for that. And then the capital outlay is for uh, a plow replacement, twenty-one thousand. Any questions on that? In swim. Again, uh, we have a little bit in supplies, um, the storm filter cartridge replacement is this year, we do every other year between clean uh, replacing our uh, swim filters um, um, and then cleaning out um, uh, vaults and that type of thing. So this is the year that we'll be doing that, so there's about twenty thousand dollars increase for twenty twenty-four for that. Um, other services and charges, you'll see in there that were a little bit uh, lower, and the reason for that um, is we're no longer doing uh, sweeping with Maple Valley. Uh, we, they're separate, uh, so so what that had in there was a cost that we would get recouped. Um, so it's about a hundred thousand or so that was in there uh, in the past. So they would recoup that money, but it shows up in here as far as the cost for that, so they have their a separate contract and we we do too. It just got to be uh, harder and they also wanted to go um, on their own on that too. So um, so that's the changes in that. Um, and then for um, capital outlay for this year, those are um, for twenty twenty-three, those are projects, that was Lilian Berger and Tamarack uh, projects, uh, that's what those were. Uh, uh, those two projects, and then next year is uh, Covington Park and Morgan's Creek, uh, we're doing some work um, in those for next year. Um, and then the uh, transfer out for this year was for our maintenance facility. Uh, as well, there was a portion of that that was the decision card last year, and this was the portion from swim for that, I believe that's where. Oh, sorry.
Oh, no worries, couple portions. What's the uh, cost of our contractors sweeping?
This year, we just got a new one, uh. Gosh, I'll look that up, uh, I don't remember exactly what it is, uh, for our portion. I think it's a hundred hundred and something thousand, we just had it recently on that, I'll go back, I'll get that for you here in a minute.
And what's the schedule? I mean, how often are they?
Um, so uh, so to talk about sweeping, one of the reasons why we terminated that contract because uh, the previous sweeper was terrible, um, and wouldn't do the work. So, so we've got, uh, we've got a new one. And in the, in the past, we have a schedule that's set out in the, in the contract where we do downtown um, uh, streets. Is it weekly, I think, and then uh, then like residential is like quarterly, and so we we have a set period that we're doing through that and that's all laid out in there. The problem that we've had is basically we couldn't get the sweeper to do it, or they would be just going down the middle of the road and they not do the shoulder, not do, like, it was just like, well, you're not really helping us. Or they'd get to the end and and they would just, there'd be a big pile of sweeping just left, like, in the side of the road, so it was really, really bad.
Yeah, well, that, I I appreciate that, that we've got a new one, because I, I work exclusively from home and have never seen that. I mean, I, I'll say in my three years, I've been there maybe once, I saw the sweeper come through, so that's good that we're, we're getting a new one, so.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully that will. And and again, what we wanna do is be able to be a little bit more uh, proactive too. What we want to do is be able to be a little bit more, uh, proactive too, to get the word out. We're trying to work with them so we can let neighborhoods know. We're coming in and, and this is when we're going to do that. And that was part of this too, that we were talking with them.
It's, uh, not that I want this, but, um, San Francisco just. Hammers the sweeping and they'll have signs. And say this, they're. They say every week they sweep. They don't, but they, they go out and ticket your car so that you don't move them from, uh, getting them out of the way. But. What? You said there was some work in Morgan's Creek? What's that?
There's a house they're going to remove.
I heard it hasn't been swept in a while.
We have dirt roads, by the way.
There's the, the storm facility there, uh, basically, um. Uh, doing some work in there. I think that this part of it is just the design part of it, I believe is where we're at at this point. But basically, uh, retrofitting that. Uh, it's time for that.
I received a report that the current contract cost for sweeper is ninety-seven thousand, six hundred forty.
See, see Shelley, she's taking care of me right now.
I love working with Shelley too.
Um, speaking of the, the schedule, I thought it was going to be one of Sean's questions because I think he was in a HOA meeting. With Joe and I, and it has come up, residents would like to see a schedule. And so you alluded, that was part of the plan. Like, are we giving them some time to make sure that they're sticking to it? And then we can broadcast it to communities? Or what is the plan to actually share it?
Yeah, I, I think that's working a little bit. Um, yeah, I want to make sure like. They're doing well and, and doing, uh, good before we say. This is great, right? Uh, so, but I do think that, um. It should be a lot better than what, uh, than what it was, uh, in the past. So, um, and then. You know, we'll work with Carla and stuff too, and getting the word out and stuff into neighborhoods and different ones like that and say. You know, a little bit of the challenge is. We want to be a little careful. It's like, it might be hard to pick like this is the actual day. So, but that's also problematic for homeowners. If you say there's like, it could be this week, right? And so then if you have a vehicle parked or that type of thing. So. That's a little bit where we're trying to work through that, uh, at least try to give as tight of a parameter as we can. So.
And if we're able to narrow it down to your point, we could also get the word out to the HOAs.
I guess I just wonder in some of those communities though, like you can only park on one side of the street. They can't put, where are they going to put the car? Right? Like.
Well, sometime, sometimes it is irrelevant, but I, it's still helpful to know, like, in case you're, if you can move it, move it. Or if you have something that's kind of parked there all the time, you can get it out of the way.
And some people just, they'll even say that. They'll say, hey, look, I, I will move my vehicle. I know that I don't have a plate. They, they will do that if you can. But like, that's the thing though, as tight as you can let them know because they do run into those issues.
Yeah, no, I think announcing is great. It's just. Did they do one side of the street one week and then, I don't know. I mean, just so that they can, people can switch, whatever.
Any other questions on swim? CIP. I just felt like I skipped something, but no. Um, so there's our capital projects for next year, um. The co- coming to connect your phase three B, that's the, the piece going up the hill. Um, they've done the, uh, you've seen the. The fact that they br- brought the subgrade and everything up on that, what that project will be. Well, right now they'll be putting in. The developer will be doing a portion of that by putting in utilities in the whole area. Once they do that, our project, um, which is using, uh, uh, TIB funds. Of, uh, three and a half million. So that's offset by, uh, a grant, TIB grant for three and a half million. That's pretty much just doing curb gutter sidewalk. And, uh, like landscaping, literally everything else, catch basins, all that is being done beforehand. So our piece is literally kind of the top dressing. For that project. So. That makes that nice, uh, pretty straightforward. Uh, maintenance facility, um, we're still working through that. We've actually been working with the water district, um. We have to sprinkle the building, uh, so there's some things that we're still working with them. Um, uh, we have a meeting with them next week. On trying to get that all, all worked out. So we had hoped to be further along this year, uh, but basically that. Uh, is being pushed to next year. So we actually had some money thinking that we would get started this year. Of about seven hundred and fifty thousand that we thought in our estimated actual for this year. That's just going to be moved into the, the twenty twenty-four budget to add to that two, um, two hundred and two point two million. But Casey will add that to her changes worksheet. So it's just basically, we thought we'd start it this year. Now it's going to get pushed into next year. So, uh, fingers crossed on all that. We're getting closer. Uh, obviously I'd hope to get through all of that sooner. Um.
What is the plan for once you're in the new space? What is the plan for the old space?
Um, right now I believe there's not been anything like it's been solidified with anything other than I, what I've typically heard that. We don't want to give up the space for necessarily, but I don't know if that's.
Right. Anything we can own. Yeah. How big is that lot?
Is it? Two thirds of an acre, three quarters of an acre?
Is that big enough for a dog park? You know, I would assume everyone knows why I'm asking. Based on Tuesday's meeting. I mean, I have to ask.
There is a little bit of plan for that in the sense of snow and ice because. The, the. The way the stormwater, uh, for the new facility is laid out, um. We have limited infiltration and that type of thing at that site. So, uh, because we have a, a, a pond storm facility at the existing, uh, park, which is, I mean, at the existing. Maintenance facility is, which is shared with the, uh, fire department back there. So, uh, that would be a lot easier for us as far as, because that's all, uh, impervious surface that we basically assumed. So if we have that site be where we deal with snow and ice and even like dealing with stormwater. Uh, type issues, uh, that would be a lot easier for us to do it at that piece and have. Like maybe our salt, our salt storage or something along those at that location. Otherwise, um, we're limited of what we can do because of stormwater, uh, requirements at the new facility. So it would still be nice to, um, utilize that in some sort of way for, for maintenance, especially for snow and ice response. Five sixteen bridge. That is the, uh, design where that should be coming back to you guys for that contract with Koi. Here at the next council meeting. Covington Way, uh, continuing with the design on that. Uh, eleven twenty-seven, uh, finishing the construction of that. So we've gotten through the two, um. Fish windows, um, and so that's was two huge hurdles that we've got behind us. Uh, we're out of in-water work. So that's great. Uh, now we're building walls on the south side. You'll start seeing that. They'll start setting girders hopefully by around the first of the year for that, um, for that. So that'll be great. So, um, and then eleven twenty-eight is finishing the design, uh, on that. So that's, that's what those, um. CIP projects are. So then decision cards, we've talked about, um, the admin, uh, shared admin, uh, person. That's great. Uh, for us, that's pretty much, uh, helping, uh, Shelley and stuff with. Uh, we're just doing more and more contracts, uh, and then also actually. Helping Jesse a lot with, uh, see click fix and that type of thing. So just dealing with that administratively and stuff like that. He's just doing a lot of things with that. So, uh, that will be helpful in that regards for us. Uh, we do have some, uh, another decision card for some additional, uh, fleet funding for, um. Again, uh, council, uh, has been great with helping, uh, us with some of the, uh. Replacing of vehicles and the fleet funding that we had shortages on that. So this is getting us. Again, the next step, uh, to getting that all, um, whole in those regards. So that's what the fleet funding one is. The variable, variable message board, which we talked about, uh, last year as well. That's, um, funded. And then the unfunded pieces is the pavement preservation coordinator. Um, you see the cost of that was a hundred and ninety-six thousand ongoing and, uh, six thousand one time. Um, so, uh, the thoughts being with that, uh, at least, uh, maybe starting off with, uh, a consultant. Uh, trying to get, um, the kind of the program off the ground, that type of thing and see how that stuff goes. And we'll start with a consultant to start off with. Um, and so with that, not needing a, uh, a vehicle for the pavement preservation, uh, person. So. Questions on that?
Could you give some examples of what this person does? Like, I mean, I read the description, but then I was like, oh, then they're gonna need a vehicle to be out moving around. Yeah.
So, so what we have is we have our, we have all our roadways, right? And we have periodically, we have done pavement condition assessments, right? So it's a lot of data that basically says, here's the conditions of this. We have a program. That, um, is called Paver and it basically, um, takes that data and it kind of sets you out on a, um. A program for when you should like, uh, oh, you should do a chip seal here or you should do, you know, um. Overlay in these cases. So you're, you're kind of doing a, a plan, like a multi-year plan for when you should be addressing these, um. Issues across the city. So, so. You're someone basically taking that data, putting together, developing a multi-year plan for when, how should we best use the funds that we have? You know, what, what type of improvement should we be doing on these different facilities? Should we be doing like a chip seal? Like we've typically not done a chip seal. We've done, um, uh, seal codes or we've done. Um, you know, obviously just really overlays type thing. So this would be like evaluating, uh. Maybe different, uh, adding different tools to the toolkit, uh, to, so to speak. So looking at that. So then not only would they be kind of building or planning what that would be, then they would also be like, okay, let's take. This section of road and we've now decided to make this a, uh, say it's a chip seal. Um, then they're going to put together the contract documents. They're going to basically cradle the graves. Saying, so basically put it all together, go out to, uh, bid, um, and. Obviously help with say like Shelley and that type of thing. But, but then they would also be kind of inspecting. Uh, the contractor doing the work and then close out paperwork and everything. And then. Update the, the database, the paper databases is now this is done, this work is done. Now what's the priorities? Right? So it's kind of this cycle all the time is what you're, you're kind of reevaluating. Okay. Because you, as if you recall, you know, every, you know, everything's degrading at, at some point. When's the perfect time to do different, uh, different treatments? So.
And it's, it would be restricted to pavement, not sidewalks, just the roads or sidewalks?
No, they would be basically doing, um, there's an aspect of that too, that you could definitely use the funds for that for sure. And I had, um. I had planned to use a portion of that for those two because we just need to have money going towards that as well. So I did set aside. So this person would be helping with that and stuff. Right, right now Jesse's doing that. We just had a. Contract that, uh, we got bids on for, uh, a number of locations for pavement, uh, repair, which will be coming back to council. Also, um. Either the next council meeting, it might be at the next council meeting, um, for that contract to do some more, uh. Pavement or excuse me sidewalk replacement. So, um, which would be utilized in these funds for that as well.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions? So future significant budget issues, a lot of these, I feel like, uh, you guys heard. Uh, the sustainability of the street fund, um, uh, you guys are aware of that. Basically just the subsidized. That, that comes from the general fund and Casey, uh, alluded to that earlier. Um, additional parks, uh, maintenance needs for expanding parks, um, uh, that is also, um, actually. From the, uh, Parks and Rec, they mentioned that, um. Uh, as well, the commission. And I think what that is just, uh, we've got, uh, Founders Park and then the increases at Jinkus Creek Park and stuff coming too. So. Those are just things that we'll need to evaluate. Uh, how do we want to go about that? Um, I, I believe at the summit, we're going to be talking about level of service except two for maintenance. So, uh, that will be a good opportunity to dive into that as well. Um, continue, uh, continued significant increases in fleet prices. It's, it's just ridiculous. I mean, it's just like. As you guys know, with any vehicles and stuff too, it's just. It's just gross. It's nuts. It's crazy. Right? Well, that's the scary. I'm always, Casey and I are both nervous all the time. Anytime John or anybody calls us about, oh, here's the update. It's like, oh, there's another like update. We're like, gosh, and we're like locking these things in. So. And then a little bit too is just that I mentioned the pavement preservation of the street maintenance funding, a little bit to what we talked about. Obviously we have the additional funding in there. Uh, but obviously there's still some gaps in there as far as fully funding, uh, what we're doing, uh, in, in street maintenance and that type thing. We've made a huge, uh, uh, leap really with those, uh, payment preservation funds, uh, so. Uh, that's, that's all I have on that until leave and then it's.
Beth, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Do we want to take a break or do, uh, we'll go right into Parks and Rec? Everybody good continuing?
Alright, so we have three divisions then Parks and Rec, Aquatic, Recreation, Cultural Arts.
That was just a test. Now I'm like. So we'll start off with aquatics. Just kind of going through the, the different line items here. There's really no substantial changes to salaries and benefits for full-time staff, although we do have. Uh, changes to part-time staffing levels that are adjusted to match, uh, program levels. Uh, but with any increases there, they do have offsetting revenues. For the supply line, um, the needs for certain operating supplies, particularly uniform parts, small tools. And minor equipment, um, have decreased. So it's a little bit of savings in that line. Uh, unfortunately, we don't have any savings with our services and charges line. Um, you'll see in twenty twenty-three estimated actuals that it's. A bit higher and that's all related to, uh, repairs and maintenance costs for the facilities. Uh, that's kind of spread out, uh, among a number, a number of items that we've had to address up there this year. Uh, including roof and roof drain repairs, plumbing repairs, concrete repairs, HVAC repairs. Electrical repairs, drywall repairs, structural repairs, and we had to replace the pool filters. So. Um, Casey had emailed me. She's like, did we do a project up there? It's really not a single project. It's just a bunch of little things that we're constantly having to address. Uh, and so that'll, that'll have to be offset with savings in other areas or a, a budget adjustment from the aquatics reserve.
So it looks like the twenty twenty-three budget is fairly similar to the requested. I mean. Are, do you think that we're probably going to need to have another sixty, whatever it is? Eighty thou for next year?
For repairs and maintenance? I think if, it's hard to know without a crystal ball. I think, um. I wouldn't be surprised, but we do have that aquatics reserve. So we have a little bit of flexibility to, to pull from that, make sure that things are operating okay. Uh, moving on to recreation and cultural arts. Uh, again, we don't really have any changes to, um, the salaries and wages line, other than this year, we did see a little bit of cost savings. Uh, just because we had a retirement in the division and new staff were brought on at a different. Step within the salary range. So there's a little bit of savings there. Uh, otherwise we're just adjusting part-time hours to program levels that again have offsetting, uh, revenues. Uh, supplies. It did decrease in twenty twenty-four because in twenty twenty-three, we had some one-time decision cards, um. But other than that, uh, no changes there. And, oh, other services and charges, we, we do see an increase there, but those are for our contract instructors. So. It's just that we're offering more classes, but those also have offsetting revenues. Moving on to parks. So this is parks, planning and development and admin. Um, no big changes to salaries and wages, supplies, um, has gone down. Little bit because we had some one-time decision cards in twenty twenty-three. And then. Uh, it's gone, the other services and charges is lower in twenty twenty-four because we had a decision card related to doing the feasibility. Uh, work for the aquatic rec center that's taking place in twenty twenty-three. Decision card related to doing the feasibility uh work for the aquatic rec center that's taking place in twenty twenty-three. On to Park CIP. Uh, so. The Eco Park, uh, we just received news that the property owner is no longer uh agreeable or or interested. In a conservation easement. So that was the Camp McCullough property. They actually had come to. Us saying they were interested in a conservation easement, which would have been a revenue for them. We went and got some grant funding for that. Then when we were ready to move forward with it, they've said, no, we're not interested anymore. So that's no longer on the table. Um, and I I guess that might be captured in the work uh changes worksheet. We have a public art. Uh, this is um. What we plan to actually do in twenty twenty-four, that's under our public art program. Uh, it includes. Doing another call for art for another rotating art piece, which could be installed at Jenkins Creek Park. So we'll, it's obviously reliant on us doing that project and getting a a new location kind of set up for that, but that's potential by the end of the year. Um, and then also doing uh another round of vinyl art wraps for traffic carts. For Jenkins Creek Park, that's our project, that's um. Uh, for the new parking lot and and main entrance for the park where. Ninety-nine percent sure we'll get that done in in twenty twenty-four. So we've we've hit some delays. We thought we were gonna kick it off this year and obviously we. Had to work through some issues, but um uh everything's seems like it'll be a green light for twenty twenty-four, which is exciting. It's the ninety-nine percent. You never want to say a hundred percent, I think. I gave I gave myself an out. Uh, welcome park. Um, this is um. We also, this is also known as the Calhoun Pit Property or the one acre of the Calhoun Pit Property. Uh, an update on this is we've we've gone back uh. As you probably remember, it has a contamination on that site and we've really been trying to work with uh the utility that owns that. Property to see if they'll clean it up so that we can purchase it. They're just not at a point where they're ready to make that a priority. They've just got a lot of other. Things that um are more of a priority. So that's actually gonna be another change. That's gonna come off our list of things that we can do. Um, they have indicated uh if they can prioritize it in the future, that they'll come back to the city and we can. Uh, again, have that conversation of whether they can clean it up and we can purchase it.
What's the contamin?
Uh, when King County Roads o- owned it, there was a underground petroleum storage tank uh and they cleaned up. Uh, when they were gonna cite their lift station there, they did a a bit of cleanup, but it hasn't. They haven't gone through the process to actually have it. No, it's not. And we've we've worked with them to try to say there's programs out there that they can work through and. They're just saying they don't have the bandwidth to even manage that.
Was the tank still there?
I believe they're removed and they even removed to a certain depth, but they're not at a place where they.
They want to get it.
They they want to monitor it.
Did you have to water or monitor for how long?
I don't know. I think it's up to whatever plan ecology. It wouldn't be advisable, obviously, for the city to take on a contaminated.
Yeah, remind me again, how much was it gonna? Was it nine hundred and seventy-five it was gonna cost them to clean it?
Oh, I don't know.
I'm gonna get, oh, I thought there was because we were debating on whether we wanted to purchase it.
Yeah, no, I don't think that number's known.
Ron might have thrown out some big numbers.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Didn't we just put the sign on there? It's the least. Yeah, no. Cause I know we wanted that to be the welcome park, but couldn't we just put the, remember we had the temporary sign on there?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if we ever really got that easement or not, because we started moving towards just trying to purchase the whole thing. But now there's some other potential sites that might be better spots.
One of the, and sorry, this is totally, sorry, yeah, one totally unrelated, but it seems like there's a lot of semis at Park right there. Just kind of hang out there. Um, just, yeah, yeah. So anyway, just some that that's the first. I mean, maybe that isn't the best place with a sign, but it that's kind of often the first welcome to Covington. There's a lot of. Yeah, a bunch of park.
Just for my information, where is this? Um, is it near the fire station as you come in to Covington on five sixteen?
Yeah, if you're coming in from Kent and you're coming, it's gonna be, once you go over. Sue's Creek and it's gonna be on your left.
And I forget what street that is. It's just a grass.
There's a big rock in there also that they had a problem.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well, Ron was saying it was the size of a VW bug.
What a cool thing to put a sign on.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it must be underground.
It was it was just at the point where it was too expensive for them to continue, even with the contaminants. But it wasn't too expensive for them to remove the same sized rock. Yeah, over where we live.
The only part you'd be on, I was just thinking if if they would lease it to us for an agreed price for it.
Yeah.
So.
Would we have to do any?
So the problem is you're not gonna be able to do any development of any sort until that contamination. I don't think so. We have to talk to our community development department, but um, that's my.
It would be really nice to go back to King County and have them clean up the mess.
I mean, it it really should be cleaned up before anything is done there. And then Jenkins Creek Trail, um, the three hundred and thirty thousand there is to do the design work that um. Council, I think, just approved at the last council meeting as well as an acquisition that would be needed for uh the first segment. So decision cards. To kind of start activating the city town center site, which we wrote up here as City Plaza, but it's the same same site. Uh, is five thousand dollars to start locating some events uh at that location to where we can start, also create some awareness and education about. Uh, what that site can be. Um, and that's kind of related, connecting to the website that was included on it in the executive department. Unfunded is.
I though I was gonna ask Selena this, but maybe, so I know that the developer is going to go in and start redoing that road. So there will be some construction activity that may or may not make it easier for people. I mean, I'm all for it. I'm not saying. But when is that starting? Because I know I'm thinking about some other events that we like. Like a purple light night traipse and through there and and I'll be able to do that because there's some stuff going on or what.
Yeah, I I wouldn't worry too much about it yet. They're they're still in with plans um for construction. They there's funding issues. Out there for residential multi-use projects, um. Just in general apartments, condos, things like that. So they don't have financial funding for that project.
They won't start doing anything on the road until they can.
Yep.
Get that.
Yep, I think that I would say if we did something this next year, unless again, the economy changes in a different way or things open up that. You probably could do some, I mean, they're they're not. Yeah, okay.
And any planning for events, we'll make sure that we we know what's going on. Uh, for unfunded, um, we did have the idea um to kind of. Turn a bunch of part-time hours, customer service hours into a full-time position, just to create some consistency. Uh, and and decrease the the turnover in those positions up at the aquatic center. Um, we we didn't fund that, but we've gone back and kind of reworked it so that. Uh, we could add that back in. That position could also help with some lower level admin work that we need done in the department. Uh, which would free up the customer service coordinator to do some higher level admin work, uh, which could support. Um, the whole department, myself included. Um, and uh. So that would also eliminate the Parks and Rec admin position that was approved last year and it's currently vacant. Um, so it nets out to needing eighteen thousand dollars more to make that kind of rework done. Uh, and so that rework has been, I believe, included in the proposed budget. Another change. There's a lot to follow, but I think it actually will work well for the department and. Um, help us support making sure our website's updated and commission materials are. Completed on time and get done and contracts are supported and things like that. Uh, and then community room improvements, that was gonna be a kind of a one-time kind of refresh on the community room. Um, and just given revenues, it wasn't included this year, but it could easily be done in future years. Significant budget issues. So obviously there's just kind of the big category of capital improvements. Um, that could be expanding parts facilities that could be just kind of we're getting to some of our facilities, getting older and they just. Need are gonna need to be replaced at some point and some of our old ne- older neighborhood parks like Crystal View and Friendship Park, those playgrounds are getting a little. Tired looking, um, and they typically are kind of those kind of elements do get replaced uh periodically. Uh, and then the a new aquatic and rec center is really uh probably the largest kind of budgetary um. Cost of something the city would take on. Uh, and we're studying that right now, obviously, uh, that report. Uh, we're we're gonna bring back to city council either at the end of this year or beginning of next year and. That could be a good summit item to kind of decide what where do we go next with with that information. Uh, and then just to kind of reiterate what what was probably said earlier with Dawn was uh that park maintenance. Um, there's always needs for that, especially if we have a growing park system, so. And that's that's it for Parks and Rec. I don't know what's next. Other decision card requests. Or a break? I don't know.
You guys want to take a break or should we keep going?
Let's take our break now and then.
So take a ten-minute break? That work? Alright. Welcome back to our. Oh, good idea. No, it's a great idea.
I'm just jealous. I didn't think of it.
Yeah, me too. I always thought she was gonna.
Let me turn it a little bit.
Finding chairs.
Jennifer's back just in time.
Two-minute drive over there.
So we'll turn it right over to uh, is it Casey? You're presenting?
I guess. Alright, um, so I put in a couple of decision cards this year, um, and uh. Would appreciate the council's um consideration of them um. To uh relate to. Public safety, uh, and the first one we're gonna talk about is community involvement. So. At the last um Tri-Cities meeting, we went to, I was intrigued by Maple Valley's. Uh, discussion of their outdoor public meetings. Um, I think they have them at their Wilderness Park. Um, and so they're really. Oh, the legacy site, yeah, yeah. And they said they get uh, you know, really good participation and you know, it's kind of a fun. Outdoor event, but also serves the city's purpose of, you know, increasing uh awareness and getting. Um, involvement on some of these activities. So. I had also just finished uh the four hundred emergency management services training and. One of the things that came out of that was a message that, you know, we hear. From EMS people saying it's three days, be prepared for three days. You know, you have to have food, water. Things like that to last three days. Well, in this EMS ma- meeting, they actually said it's probably closer to two weeks. If we have a huge event. You're gonna be on your own for two weeks before emergency services can get to you. He said he's not ready for two weeks. I mean, you're gonna have just chaos. So. Kind of put those two together, I thought one of the first great outdoor kind of town hall meetings would be to talk about emergency management planning. What's the? I know we have our emergency plan, but just kind of make it a uh outdoor event. There'd be the playground for the kids, things like that, but. Um, present on what simple things you can do to just prepare yourself for this type of event, you know. Uh, checking in on your neighbors, see if they're okay. Um, but then these outdoor town halls could be used for other things like we did with. Reclaim the streets or whatever, we take it to the streets or, you know, so I, we've got those shelters up there and I just thought it would be kind of an interesting. Opportunity to use CCP, but also to um. Maybe get people out of this building and you go to where they are up at CCP. So that's kind of what their thinking was behind this. Uh, outdoor town hall meeting, so.
We also had a couple of ideas with that at the council. We could do it in conjunction with like one of our concerts or movies in the park. So. Do it maybe the hour beforehand, like generate more attendance.
Do it on August thirty-first when our birthday is.
Sean, a question about the six thousand dollar cost, what would that be for?
They put, I just, you know what I wrote? I wrote the top part.
So for staff, emotion and for food.
Okay.
And how many do they have? No, 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 how many?
They do it on their birthday week as well.
No, yeah, five, five hundred would be great, yeah.
Do we have to? Like, I I understand the refreshments because we're gonna do this in the summer. It's gonna be hot and.
They do ice cream.
I mean, but do we have to feed people? I mean, don't get me wrong, I want food always, but.
Right, it can.
Pizza wants to.
Um, they they do, they fund ice cream, but then they have a food truck.
And they had uh t-shirt tie dyeing, I think is what they said, which I think it's really important. Some kind of food, like Christina said, it doesn't have to be big, and then something for kids to do. If you can go somewhere and actually hear just three things you need to know for an emergency while your kid is being entertained. Eating an ice cream like that's that's a value and makes it a a fun family event. I really like the idea, Sean. I think it's something. Like you said, we have the emergency management plan, but. Our, that doesn't trickle down to our residents. I know we do, you know, like a post and stuff, but like really, it's 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 extremely important.
I hadn't heard two two weeks, you know, I've got stuff that. We can make it three days, but like two weeks, uh. Exactly. So anyway, I appreciate that. So.
One one thing to think about on this and and this goes more into the planning, but doing it at CCP, um. We can have things for the kids to be involved, but inevitably they're gonna want to go play on the playground, which means parents might want to be watching them, which means. We're competing, you know, so that we that's something we can figure out, but.
I mean, I, you know, I could have seen the town, the town set, the city center site.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Cause I mean, there's kids always playing there on the playground. There's a coverage shelter. It's near the. I mean, and we can put some pop-ups and. Worse, and there's a park going across the street.
Yeah.
I mean, if we want to start promoting that area. And then I also think too, like I know I I've wanted to go, um, everyone's different, but. Sometimes it's hard getting there early because, you know, you get done with work and you go home and eat and all that stuff. So even if we did it on a different.
No, I'm not. Yeah, that actually I thought about that downtown might be better. So that's actually not bad. Anyway, that's what I have on that one. Do I need to go through all of them or do we want to?
Uh, I guess we can have councils decide if that's something they want to include in the budget.
Just council want to bring this forward to a budget, the consensus, thumbs up.
Alright, okay, so the next one, um, so. We often get a lot of uh feedback from the public about speeding, you know, it just seems like that seems to be a big problem that there are people speeding on two fifty-sixth and. Other places and and so um I just reached out to Adam at one point and said, you know, can you tell me where? Most complaints for speeding are. And uh, so he sent me a list and there's like five or six streets that they get the most complaints for. For speeding and I, you know, said short of, you know, putting. For speeding and I, you know, said, short of, you know, putting police officers all the time, can we. Get additional radar, um, signs, you know, that flash your, um, speed limit and put them at the places where. There's the greatest problem for speeding, you know, it's, it's not perfect, but it at least would. Remind people, especially coming down two fifty-six, if you're going west, they're coming off the hill off the roundabout and they're. You know, it's forty, but they're starting to do it forty-five, fifty miles an hour down that road, and so. If there was a radar sign that was dedicated there, you know, at a minimum, just tell people you're speeding, just to remind them. Um, that might slow some of them down, so, um, the other thing I. We've, we've heard is often people come to council and say, we want speed bumps, you know, that seems to be their, their go-to, um. And kind of the conversation goes back and forth and, and. Basically, it, it doesn't really go anywhere, and what I wanted to do with this, and I know we're gonna talk about it at summit two is, um. What, de- developing a process for these communities to say, okay, it's not a hard no. But here's what you need to basically do in your community to. If there are traffic calming meas- additional traffic calming measures you wanna initiate, so it's not just speed bumps, maybe there's the. The bump outs or other things you can do, um, there's a money in here for a survey to basically. Ground truth where the, the greatest, uh, potential for speeding is and then. Talk to the community and see what their expectation is for the city to. Alleviate some of these problems, so that's what this, um, decision card's about, and then. What I'd like to see at the summit is start developing a process for communities when they come to us, say we'd like. You know, like this community that just came to us, so they're speeding down our neighborhood, it isn't just a, well, thank you, you know, it's like. Here's the steps you have to take and it means getting your community involved, that sort of thing, so anyway, that's what this is about. Yeah.
Do we find that those, um, speed enforcers are effective?
Talking about the radar sign? Um, I, the effectiveness is limited, so they, they are very effective initially. Uh, when you stick them up there, it does slow down traffic, the problem is if you leave them up for a long period of time. People start to ignore them, or you get the people who decide to see how high the sign will go. Um, so you might actually increase some of the reckless driving that way, but generally, when you put them in, it very much drops it down. Um, one thing to mention is we did just add a speed trailer, which is something we can deploy everywhere. It doesn't write tickets, but it does give us a range of where people are speeding, we're able to actually mitigate.
Get data from that.
Yeah, so we take data from that, which then we can make decisions as to where we do enforcement. Um, so typically, when we deploy that trailer, we find that the speeding is not nearly as bad as the resident has said. Um, and actually, one of the complainants that's repeated many, many times, uh, Officer Sisna went. Actually showed him how the radar system works and had him guess what the speed was and then see what the speed was and found. Well, actually, they are doing, you know, twenty, twenty-five miles.
The resident thought they were speeding.
Doing forty, yeah, around the corner when it was really twenty-five, so.
That's kind of why I asked, cause.
Yeah.
Opinions, everyone has. Yeah, you can finish the rest, but like, for example, by, by Kentwood, um, two sixty-four. We, we now have a, a radar, awesome, you're right, it works for me three days. Up to a week at most, um. And I, I purposely tried, cause it's, it's, it's a, it's a neighborhood, it's not a main road at all, but people treat it like the main road.
Yeah.
But, but I clocked myself and I'm like, is twenty, you know, I, I won't, I literally, I will not drive more than twenty-five. Twenty-seven and on that road, but, but it's just, it's super subjective, like you say, it's super subjective and I can see people. I've had people like, I've seen people, you know, slow down, this is literally the speed limit, so. I just wanna know before, before actually allocating funds to something that we could potentially put somewhere else, is it effective? Does it work? Um, and then is it just pure opinion, right, like, but those, but that, what you're mentioning for data, that's, that's.
Yeah, I don't think the signs that we selected for this particular decision card have the data on it to them. Um, they are movable, so you could move them, but that costs a lot, so.
It's cheaper if we can find poles to attach them to.
So I, I think since we got the trailer, alright, we just got the trailer and it can.
I will.
But since we got the trailer, I think we should use that first for a little bit to study kind of those ideas before we commit to anything, uh, putting. Putting the speed signs in where else, so that we can get sort of that data and figure out where it's all coming from.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Cause that was the one on one ninety-first, right, the one we just, uh, near your house, you know, I saw that, that's what you're talking about, that collects the data.
Yes, okay.
Is that the gentleman that was saying it was hired right there?
I don't think it's that particular person, we actually, like I said.
He's the one that came to our, the first mayor meetup this year, he and the neighbor.
Yeah.
Who park out in the middle of the street.
Public works.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Reflectors, we go take them off.
I'm like, I think they.
They, they leveled up.
Any other questions for Sean on this? I have a question, so you brought up a study.
Yeah.
That's included in this forty-five-five and that study.
I think it was more a survey.
A survey.
Like a social media kind of survey.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, it was kind of to ground truth and get some data on the actual. Areas where speeding's taking place, what people are willing and would accept in traffic calming measures, so. That's what I was looking for there, that would help us when. If and when we do develop a process for communities or neighborhoods to institute, you know, there's a step process for. Okay, they come to us and say, we want these speeds to come down, well, maybe the first step is to put the, the radar thing in that neighborhood and start collecting the data. Then if it is found that they're speeding, okay, the next step is put a police officer there to write tickets and if they keep going, then you just. You bump up, you put engineering controls in, you do bump outs or, but I want people to feel like. Oh, there is a process that's gonna address my problem, as opposed to, okay, thanks, we heard you and, you know, we'll see you later. Yeah, no speed bumps.
So going on that survey.
Yeah.
That's only a portion of that forty-five thousand, would that survey also be included to. Like, we still have problems at this intersection here where. Um, earlier this week, a fire truck couldn't get through, cause people coming out from Fred Meyer were blocking. The traffic, because they wanna beep the light and they're sitting there blocking, nobody could move. Yeah, this intersection is a constant problem, so I don't, I don't know if the survey would be.
Include that, I, I, I think the ninety-nine percent of that cost is. There's very little for kind of the community.
Maybe not necessarily a budget item, but you were talking about how the guy thought it was, they were speeding, and I feel like. Twenty, to me, you know, twenty miles an hour in a residential is the same what we ask of our, of people in school zones, because there's kids. I mean, and you never know when there's gonna be a neighborhood with kids or not, cause they move them around, would, but do we think that lowering the speed limit to twenty? I mean, I know if people are gonna break it, they're gonna break it, but twenty-five to me sometimes seems super excessive when you have kids out and. Like, they're playing street hockey out and, and they should be able to have some level of safety, so I, is that something you could?
I, I don't have an answer for, uh, if that, what that would do.
Yeah, alright, okay.
I honestly don't know.
Well, that could be part of the, is people are willing, you know, that's one of the questions, are you willing to lower the speed limit in your residential? And then, you know, maybe we do, we could temporarily put one in and see what happens, put the radar sign there and see if people are still speeding, if it lowers it, so.
So does council want to include this in the budget, we wanna think about it and bring it back at our future council meeting? Before the, we sign off on the budget.
Alright, so think about it is, it could come back into the budget.
Is it, think about that it could come back before December thirteenth, or think about it and we'll discuss it next year?
Yeah.
Next year, but you're planting seeds.
And now that we've got the other radar sign, I think that kind of addresses some of what I was, no.
Could we, could we maybe fund the eight thousand dollar survey piece of it and then that with the data of the trailer and then maybe. Decide later if that were twenty-five, if that's something that we wanted to do.
Is it eight thousand for the survey?
Eight thousand for the survey, yeah, if, I mean, if we feel we can get valuable data from it, I mean, there's lots of questions we could ask, but. If staff feels like there's actually questions that would drive answers that allow us.
I think we have a lot of, a lot of opinions.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I just don't, I just don't wanna list of opinions. Could we get valuable information from it?
And I agree with that, if we can, that's great, I mean, I basically just kind of laid out, my vision is, we need to have a step process for addressing people's concerns. With what they believe is speeding in their neighborhoods, so we have a process where we take that and say, okay, we'll deploy the radar signs. And actually get data, I mean, I'm just saying this is what I, and if it's found to be valid, then we put police officers there for a while to slow it down, and if that doesn't do it, then you. Bump it up, but, um, would people be willing to accept that, you know, I, I don't know, yeah, Carl.
My main concern would be what Adam had talked about, is that, for instance, when a, when a resident says, oh, they're speeding at this neighborhood and if we use the survey to say. Where do you think the worst parts spots are, um, and we actually, he goes out there and shows them, actually, there's no speeding. Um, so I, I don't know that the survey would give us accurate data, but opinions for sure, so maybe we just. Come up with a way that we continue to, those specific people who are always reaching out about speed bumps and speeding, going out and doing what Adam did. Um, with them instead.
Prior to the, uh, trailer, we used to have a speed trailer before, and that's exactly how we treated it, we would have people call us up and say they're speeding. We would put that on the list for areas to deploy the trailer, and so, you know, same thing with these, and now. Having, having another one where we can do that, plus we have, you know, more, um, locations that do have radar feedback, which helps. They do get data and stuff with those, so that's always super helpful, but we would utilize that same thing to determine. What time does it happening, oh, it's right after school between four o'clock and five o'clock, and so then that gives officers the ability to go, uh. You know, check at those places, so in the past, when, when we've had, um, before our other trailer broke, but, um. That's what we would do as well, so I foresee that basically being the case going forward a- and doing that, especially that data's super valuable, uh, valuable in that regard.
Joe, I was just saying, is there anyone who's still in contact with, uh, with Chris Williams, he'll just go hide behind some bushes for us and run the speed gun and do the survey. Find out where everything is, cause that's how he got me when I was sixteen, so.
So we'll just, um, continue discussing this next year and not bring it in for this year's budget, but we'll leave it on there for discussions next year.
Alright, here's my last one, um, probably like all of you, I was. Shocked and saddened by the, uh, vandalism we had in our parks over the Fourth of July. Um, and. I thought, well, what is a simple thing we can do to kind of deter that, um, cause I'm afraid it's now. Out there that our parks are open and. Not monitored to, to the level that probably need, and we can do whatever the heck we want in there, and, um, so. I put this decision card in that would al- allow or allocate funds for, uh, security at those parks. Exclusively on the, the Fourth of July, um, so that we don't see people doing donuts destroying our, um. Bathrooms and lighting fires in Jenkins Creek Park, so that's basically what this one's designed to do.
So is this, you just said Jenkins. Would that be enough to cover? To cover both?
I, I guess they, they wouldn't be posted at one, they'd have to alternate back and forth, but.
Where was the greater, I mean, there was a fire at Jenkins Creek, but there was so much property damage.
Really trash.
Yeah.
I, as far as property damage, is there a lot of property damage this year out there? I, I don't think there was. Yeah, there was a ton of property, the property damage that's happened out there hasn't been.
Yeah, true.
True, but a lot of just garbage everywhere, donuts in the parking lot, that kind of thing.
So we have to pay to clean it up, you know, how much did that cost? I mean, so.
Uh, I know our guys are in there the next morning, you know.
So it's a, it's a cost to us regardless, if we don't put someone there, we're gonna pay to clean it up, so, yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, this is just trying to figure out, why do they have to be off-duty officers, I, I understand the Fourth of July as a, as a busy time and everything. Um, and I'm understanding, and. Can we get some unincorporated deputies to, one who wanted to work, you know, four or five hours of overtime in the city? Is that, is that a possibility? I know it's gonna probably cost more at that point, but. No, I, I don't think the cost would be more actually, but, um, getting someone to work overtime on the Fourth of July is next to impossible. Uh, but one thing to, we, we didn't realize that we were leaving the gates unlocked at, at night at CCP. Uh, that's something we've corrected, uh, the officers are locking it every night, there's a auto detail that comes up for them. At right around sunset that says you need to go lock park, they go lock park, check bathroom, so we've.
So the gates are locked.
Locked, they lock the gates at night now. Yeah, we had some automatic gates that just weren't shutting.
So if you're, cause I went for the, um, I saw, went out there one night to watch the, um, comet and the gate closed. So it won't open to if you wanna come in, but it will open, it did at that time, if you wanna go out, so if you get early enough. Yeah, anyway, I, so something, yeah, I, I appreciate that we're locking the gates, um. So anyway, that's, that's just my thinking there is, we're paying, we'll pay one way or another, you know, either we prevent it or we clean it up, so.
Are we able to hire, what, I mean, if we hired private security for the parks. How does that work with our police, does that free them up or does it create more problems?
It does, it's, so the private security, if they had an issue, they would call us to come respond and deal with whatever the issue is, there are some things they can do. Such as, hey, can you leave, they can ask people to do things.
Yeah.
Um, legally, the security can actually force people to leave, but they typically, most companies don't want their. Security officers to do that for liability reasons, um, and so they would call us, so. A lot of times they end up being glorified nine-one-one callers, which is fine, cause then that helps us address the problem without having to be there, so.
How much would that cost?
I, I thought we put that on there.
Oh, you might have.
The, the, one of the companies I called said it'd be about forty dollars an hour.
Oh.
Per officer, you probably want.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think it's just.
Probably a geeky two parts then.
Yeah, exactly, and I think it'd just be better to, and we don't have to probably do it forever, but just to nip this in the bud now, to say, cause I know they'll be. This next fourth, they're gonna be there going, we did that last year. Or whatever that.
I think it was just the fourth.
Yeah, you'd probably wanna do the third and the fourth.
Right, do you remember, do we remember about what time they were there, was it like after dark?
Yeah, it was well after dark.
Lately.
Yeah, we don't have an actual time.
Or if anyone heard the donuts and called it in and went, oh.
And one thing too, those, the arms of those two, they've been getting broken, if people are pushing on them. Breaking and allowing for people to still get in, so if they want to get in, they can get in.
Right, or they'll drive over the.
Yeah.
Fullage to get in, they really, well, I guess I was wondering, does it. It, it would be more expensive, but is there an opportunity to have a community event there, a Fourth of July event? And I know that's not necessarily, maybe not staff, or maybe staff, I don't know, and I, but not to ruin the holiday, but. If we have some kind of an event there, at least for a few hours, maybe from eight to ten. I don't know what that would be, have music, have a laser show, have something there that says, hey, you know, this is occupied right now and we care. I don't know, I, not.
No, I, I, I think, yeah, at some point, yeah, I, I agree that we need to have a presence at that park on those, that weekend. Cause you're just gonna continue to see this, but in the short term, man, we can't get something up and running by this next fourth possibly, and so I think. And so I think we need to have someone just there to make sure they don't cut down our trees.
Uh, I just think we should do something, I think security is a deterrent, having someone there. CCP, I would advise the small lot and the big lot, um because those are really far and literally just having someone there is a huge deterrent, like when people are looking for a place, they'll just go over across the streets.
Go across the street, that's out of the city.
Counsel consensus to bring this back and let um staff and Adam look at whether having off duty officers or private security covering CCP and Jenkins Creek.
So you're not, you're not funding it right now?
No, we want to, consensus to put it on the budget.
I'm sorry, but Casey said that they would absorb the cost if it was private security because it is not that.
No, we absorbed in this budget decision.
Either or, like, I, if you, if we thought it was only gonna be about three hundred dollars, but private security, but but we know it's probably gonna be more than that, but it's got a little bit of wiggle room in his budget.
I, I would, I would fund this.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, in that way, let staff, let Adam and work, so is there consensus to?
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate it.
Thank you for submitting.
All right, that, that's your two for the next three years.
Yeah, exactly. Sean kept prepping me, here's one, I'm gonna have more, yeah, I'm gonna have more, bring them on. So now what I'd like to uh go through with council is reviewing um police and streets and what those costs really are to our general fund, um uh then we'll review uh what some potential cuts are that we could make and what some potential revenue options are that council could, uh could consider. Uh, police and, and streets are two of our large the two top priorities and two of our large uh users of general fund dollars, so our police costs uh first. So since two thousand fifteen, we've hired almost uh an additional five FTEs, um so that's great. Uh, and that came at a cost of, you know, maybe one point two million dollars. The problem is during that same time period, our police contract costs have increased almost three million dollars. So that's a pretty big gap there of one point seven million without additional services that are just increased cost uh in that time span. So we've seen that green line of those steady increases until two thousand twenty-two and then they're just spiking up and, and continuing to uh, to go up, so uh that is a cost we cannot sustain with our current expenditures and revenues. It just can't happen, so this will, this will, uh as you'll see in the forecast, causes to hit a bit of a fiscal cliff in the next year or two without doing something. Other contract cities are um struggling with this as well. Uh, Maple Valley, they, they had a pretty steep fiscal cliff next year if their ballot measure doesn't pass. Uh, so because of these increased costs. So that's something that is uh paramount and something that, that we, we've got to figure out and uh how we're going to manage that priority going forward. Onto streets, so this graph, um this graph does not include transfers in from the general fund, that's how we make the streets fund whole. We see what the expenditures are and, and then we fill that gap uh with the general fund. Uh, also removed are the, the sales tax that we get in twenty-three and twenty-four as those are um uh dedicated to the overlay program, so this gives you the true gap in the street fund between revenues and expenditures. So you can see our revenues uh are coming in next year projected at about a million dollars, that's license fees our Comcast franchise, our um, our TBD uh point one percent sales tax and then uh the fuel tax. Obviously, the, sorry, go ahead.
Includes the point one?
So obviously that, uh you can see the expenses far exceed um what the revenues are. So uh again, we are not keeping up with street maintenance and that will continue to lag behind uh as we continue um as we're going. So, um.
Can you, Chris, you might click it on that.
I have a new one that has.
Is it in there?
Uh, it will be, yeah, but just in case that they want it.
So we're spending in twenty twenty-four, we're spending into our fund balance by just over one point two million dollars, so that's where our expenses are exceeding our projected revenues next year by just over one point two million. Thankfully, uh this council's been wise stewards of funds and so we've got these reserve funds that we're able to dip into but we can't rest on our laurels of our reserve funds and, and just keep dipping into those year after year. So we've got to make some big cuts today or determine a path forward with, with revenues. So that's pretty small, but you've got it before you and I'll just kind of go through, um we really kind of hammered through what is already a pretty lean budget to come up with some costs, I'm hesitant to even present these today cause I think some of you will give me some nasty looks on some of these items and none of these things do, we, we want to remove, but we've got to do our due diligence as well. So as we go through this, um this, these cuts give us about nine hundred sixty-four thousand, so almost a million dollars, so it doesn't quite make up the one point two million uh shortfall. But I'll go through some of those, so uh I'll hit some of the bigger ones, uh wetland critical area maintenance at CCP. Could eliminate that, shred bud, uh shred, little shrub, bad. Can I blame that on yelling at the football game last night? Uh, removing that, um you know, a lot of like parks maintenance things, equipment replacement costs, we could reduce by forty-nine thousand. Uh, parks maintenance overtime, that's our parks maintenance guys that come in and help out with events and, and all of that work. Another big one going down, uh elimination of the landscape maintenance contract, obviously you can appreciate the results of, of these cuts, but, but here they are. Uh, equipment replacement costs, we could uh eliminate that by fifty-six thousand dollars. Um, we could, our snow and ice supplies are twenty-five thousand if we uh you know, we, we do a good job with that each year, but um some communities don't do it, so if that's something council considered. Uh, the parade is a thirteen thousand dollar expense that, that could be removed from there. Got some of the concerts and the kids fest and whatnot, the tree lighting event. Uh, going down the recreation guide and printing and mailing, that's twenty-two thousand dollars. The public art transfer that we give, um that's twenty-one thousand. City advertising at ten and then to the two bottom ones, those bigger ones, the school resource officer position. That's one of those vacant positions we have right now. Uh, the concern is, cause we've, Casey and Adam and I have talked about this, what if we eliminate the SRO uh at this point, um and to save that money. The problem is if we eliminate a position, we've asked the county this, but they haven't gotten us an answer yet. If we eliminate a position, will you take an officer from us because we have to hold a certain amount of vacancies? And they're like, I don't know, we'll find out, that was a week or two ago that, and we're waiting to hear from them on that, so anyway, um be aware of that. The other thought uh that Adam came up with is if we dropped a minimum staffing to just one between the hours of midnight and ten AM, uh that would save us a hundred and seventy-five thousand over the year, so. We put that, what's that?
Can we afford that?
Do you mean financially or criminally?
We would re, so right now we have one of our vacancies on graveyard and one on day shift and we have a graveyard squad that has two, we would move one to day shift, which would eliminate the overtime for that and then eliminate the overtime, it's more of a vacant spot.
Can we do that?
Can we do it? Generally not a bad, not a good idea.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not a good idea, but, but it's the options that we came up with.
Eliminating another position that.
It wouldn't be eliminating position, it's shifting the hours.
Yeah, so we just wouldn't fill an overtime spot, right now our minimum is two, so we would just stop filling the vacant spot or if someone went on vacation, we wouldn't, we wouldn't fill.
What, yeah, was it, no? What historically has been our gap, I guess I want to look at that graph, bar graphs again on, cause it seems like it's.
Sorry, can you go back?
One point one million now, but what is it, what's the average?
Are you talking about police and streets?
Streets, um, cause you're saying we need to cut this.
So it's, it's in the, I would say in the last eight years, it's been between four and seven or eight hundred thousand.
Okay, uh, so I guess what I'm saying is do we need to cut a million dollars to get to that or can we go back to what the average was, is about four hundred thousand dollars? So, yeah, so right, right now you can see there's a, you know, one point seven million dollar gap, but, but we're subsidizing we're subsidizing the street fund by what, seven hundred thousand this year, Casey? Yeah, right around seven hundred thousand, so council could, but that's just to make them whole, right? Right. So that they can meet their, their expenses, if council wanted to cut back on some of the services that they're providing and that are mentioned here, then we could eliminate that to four hundred thousand, if, if you want to do that, but it'd mean Don would have to cut some of the services being provided as well.
So these cuts are to help the streets fund and what we're looking at with police.
Basically, yeah, I mean, yeah, it, it, it's an overall thing, but instead of pulling, well, thi- this is the pulling from each department, but police and, and streets, those costs are exponentially increasing. They're priorities of this council, uh and they don't generate revenue, so we've got to generate revenue somewhere else to pay for them. Uh, and so that's why, what we're presenting here, doing our due diligence, that we, you know, we have to we have to play both sides of this coin on an expense and revenue side, so these are the, these are the ex, the current cuts that, that we felt pulling together we could make if council was not prepared to do a revenue increase. This could keep us where we need to be making expenses.
So if we did a revenue increase say one of the items was the B and O tax, that would help offset the policing.
Yeah, so, and, and that's all I'll pres- present next, um with, with the revenue options that, that we'll be proposing. Um, we won't have to make any of those cuts and uh we'll be, we'll be good into the next several years.
I, I, I might wait for the revenue. To hear what your revenue things are, cause I have a lot of ideas and none of them will be popular.
To your point though, like it, we really do have to look at revenue and expenses, I mean, like any business would, we can't just go.
Absolutely, yeah. So I'm going to quickly resume, uh, review all of the revenue options the council has. Not all of them are good revenue options, so, but we want to be aware of what they are.
Unpopular ideas today.
Yeah, yeah, and, and then we'll go through them, so of course, uh B and O tax, I'm gonna talk a little bit about that later, so I won't go through that. Business license head taxes, um that is, uh can be done councilmatically, it doesn't bring in a ton of revenue, won't, won't help us a whole lot. There's excess levy, and these are all unrestricted funds, so um excess levies uh that is a sixty percent super majority uh vote of the people that we need to happen, but that could bring in I think we can really kind of set that at what the need is, right?
Well, and that, that specific one is kind of a, it's just a one year property tax levy, so it's a bias thing. Even like, so if you're trying to fund.
Not for ongoing expenses. So uh continuing on to unrestricted, uh more unrestricted revenues, water and sewer utility taxes. Uh, that can be done councilmatically, I'll be talking about that later, currently those are at zero. Solid waste utility tax and surface water management uh taxes, um those, those we are currently charging, I'll review those as well. Uh criminal justice, we've got the public safety sales taxes, this is one we talked about a little bit, the public safety committee talked about this as well. The thing we don't like about it is uh fifteen percent off the top goes to the county. Uh, and, and it didn't bring in, it, it was about, I think after that, we figured two hundred and fifty thousand, something like that. However, uh I did speak with the city of Kent the other day and we spoke to our lobbyists, we are working on a, a bill that would um ask the legislature to increase that to a point three percent. Uh, so still, my big push was, can we also get the county off of it?
Yep.
And um they will, the, everyone else in that um meeting wasn't willing to go that route because it probably wouldn't pass. Um, the counties would lobby hard against that, we hit, yeah, and so we, we hit a lot of hurdles.
We're in Franklin County, that would bring them some money and I can see why they would be fighting.
Well, King County would be the strongest one to fight against it.
Well, King County's gonna fight against anything, it takes money out of the pot.
But it seems like if, if there are contract cities with a county, that money should offset because it's policing and safety, it should offset our contract costs, at the very least, I mean, even if we're not gonna. Correct, because we're already paying them, right? I mean.
So, so what, what the justification uh for this one, the bill was originally adopted was that fifteen percent was to cover whether you were a contractor of the county or your own force cover um any county costs that might increase due to initial, right, so the money that they could put into the court system and, and things like that.
But, yeah.
Yeah, which we're already paying, I, I get it. That's one of the reasons I've strongly advocated against this because it sickens me. But, but that's where we're at and the people in the room were right, we, we um uh we would not get this passed, but with trying to remove that fifteen percent, but there's a strong likelihood we could increase it to point three percent. Yes, yeah, so it, it would triple that if we increase that to point three percent.
How much did you say it was, sorry?
Around two fifty.
Uh, point one percent would bring us in about six hundred seventy-five thousand, but then eighty-five percent of that would be five hundred seventy-three thousand that we would get.
Yeah, I, I think there was one when we I don't remember where you got that.
It's the five hundred seventy-three K, is that the one percent?
Um, that's the, it's the point one percent, that's the eighty-five percent.
So if it's to point three, then that would be. Uh, again, it's voter approval, we haven't had a lot of success uh with that, so.
That's true.
Uh, then uh under transportation, we've obviously got the um, the TBD there, vehicle license fees which we have and the the um TBD sales tax, which we've also, the council did the councilmatic point one percent uh with the vote of the people, you can uh, you can increase that.
How much did that, I'm sorry, how much is what's, what's the amount that we get for the sales tax? Uh, next year, I think I'm projecting six hundred seventy-two thousand. And then the vehicle license fee, since we currently have the twenty dollars in place, we could go up another twenty dollars if we wanted to. And then after twenty-four months, we could go up an additional ten.
And the twenty dollars is like three, three, three seventy, yeah.
Okay, so here's a, a look at all of our current rates with utility taxes, you can see electricity, natural gas, telephone, cell phones are all six, solid waste and cable, that are eight and storm drainage and then water and sewer are at zero. So um, this is something where we've got some, some wiggle room and some work that we could do if, if we wanted to raise some of these rates, uh that could bring in some additional unrestricted revenue uh that we could use for streets and uh public safety. So a quick look at what one percent looks like uh of an increase on these different uh taxes, what they would bring in. The main two we've been looking at are sewer and water. Uh, we've met with both the Covington Water District and Suits Creek Water and Sewer District to let them know we're going to be presenting this and discussing these with our city council. You know, just be prepared if anything comes up and they're, they're fine, they're a pass through agency for this, but um they would let their customers know that it's a Covington tax, not a, not a utility tax, which is fine, but uh, yeah, go ahead, Casey.
We have new numbers too.
Okay.
So we've just met with them, so we have new numbers since this came out, so for sewer they've told us that it'll be about thirty-five thousand five hundred per percent.
How much?
Thirty-five thousand five. I only knew the residential because I could see the rates, but I couldn't see the commercial, so it's um it's not quite double, but residential's about nineteen thousand and commercial's about sixteen thousand.
Okay, so it, it would impact both commercial and residential, but that was only the number.
Yeah, so, and when we were kind of doing some quick math, Casey, weren't we thinking sewer and water at six percent would bring in about five hundred thousand? And what about the water, did that number change at all? I haven't heard back from them yet, but um their rates, their residential rates are like fifty cents a piece different, I mean, so they're super close. So I feel like the water's probably gonna be about the same as the sewer.
Well, you said five hundred thousand.
So with, so that's just residential, with residential and commercial, um with, at a six percent rate, we anticipate it'll be.
About two hundred thirteen thousand.
Okay.
Per utility.
Okay. I get it.
No, that's, that's. At six percent. So then, uh, obviously the other option is the B and O that we've done a lot with, uh, we've, we've, um, worked this quite a bit. Uh, council is aware of this. We anticipate that we'll bring in about one point five million. One of the difficult aspects of this, obviously the community, the business community that we surveyed. Was in support of this as long as it was dedicated to public safety. One of our messages at that point, because it's taken us a while to get here, was that this will help pay for increased services. Well, then we got all these incredibly large increased costs, and now it's really needed just to make us. Um, which is unfortunate, but, uh, we anticipate with the, with B and O. And a six percent water and sewer, um, that that would, um. Set us up into the black for the next couple of years. Casey can review that a little bit more in the forecast. So we're waiting on a report from, uh, uh, DOR right now to start our analysis of what this will really look like and what. The exact numbers will be for Covington. We do have the ordinance and code is drafted and ready to bring to council. We hope to have that prepared to bring to you in January.
For the B and O tax?
Yep.
No, no.
So on the one point five million of revenue that would bring in, we we, that would be restricted for. Police coverage of the business community?
So they're unrestricted funds. The council could choose to spend them how they want, but the council has said if we do this. We will put them towards public safety. And no, it's not necessarily just the business district, it would be community-wide policing.
For the benefit of the recording, can we define what we say when we say that we're gonna, if we pass the B and O? What public safety means for one point five million dollars? Does it mean strictly police? Does it mean clearing sightlines on? Uh, on roads? Does it mean, what what exactly are we talking when we say public safety? I know what we mean. But I want to make sure that everyone knows what we mean, so we're not, we're as open and honest as we can be when we talk about.
Yeah, so the super majority of this would be two police officers to pay for our police services. Some might go into jail and some other things, but mostly to help cover our contract costs.
Anybody else?
I believe part of the ca- caveat was to have a liaison for the business community, right, as well?
Uh, it wasn't a caveat, there was a list of potential things we could do with increased revenues, and having a business liaison was one of those.
Is that still part of that, understanding?
Who's understand? So there was a list of like ten things we said we could do. We didn't say these are all that's gonna happen, we said these are things we could do.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah.
Are the businesses currently expecting, should there be a B and O tax of business liaison?
I think, um, not a single business expects that, primarily because it's been so long. Right, we did all this work in early twenty twenty-two, um, with the businesses, and so it's, it's been over a year since we've had any conversation.
Our our new detective is gonna start, that's gonna be part of his duties. We start Monday, that's, he's already been working on how he's gonna do that. Um, but to Reagan's point, this has to pay for.
Well, yeah.
That increase we've already made.
Absolutely, okay, thank you, that's.
So, I have a question for you, Adam. I know what the media says, but what is, how is? The hiring going for King County? Are we looking at over the next couple of years? Do we feel that there's potential for more officers that we can fill those vacancies?
So, they started last year at a hundred vacancies, and we are currently at a hundred vacancies, so.
Despite, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And so they've switched recruiters, um, and I'm not going to get into the details on that, um, because there's some bad ones, but. They've switched that, they've done a few different things which might help. They have a little bit more interest, we have people in the pipeline. Uh, one of the chronic problems we've had for a long time is the people that we are extending offers to. You can generally tell pretty quickly are not going to cut it. And so you either have to lower standards, which we're not really willing to do, because I don't, I don't want one of the officers that paid the lower standard cut. Or, uh, we have to keep, we have to be more competitive in grabbing them early, because they're opting to go to other agencies, because they get offers. Sooner than you get them from King County. So, King County's process takes, uh, three, four weeks longer than, let's say, a Baltimore or Kent. So, by the time Kent extends an offer, we're just not there yet. And so we get to pick from lower down list. Of people that have applied. So that's been part of the problem, and there's, there's a fair number of people in the pipeline, we'll see how that shakes out.
And then. I know at time there was Olympia was talking, or we, there was talks in Olympia to help out with training. Is that something that we need to do to copy our representatives down there?
So the, I believe the training bill was to add additional academy sites. Um, I I think they're already working.
Okay.
On some of that.
Yeah.
Um, and King County has six seats in each academy, and we don't, do not fill them free. So, it. I don't think it would help.
Okay.
Yeah, I I met with, uh, senior leadership at at the county for the sheriff's office, um, and we were talking about recruiting and. And how difficult it's been. They they have spent a lot of money and a lot of time, and they've traveled the country recruiting, they've gone to markets where. Like in the south where the police are paid half of what they're paid here, to try to encourage them to come up here, and and it's been, um, uh. The culture that I think has been a big thing that's hard to recruit people here. And I said, well, why don't you ask the executive in the King County Council to put out a statement that you can use in your recruitment. Brochures and and material that they support public safety and our police officers, and that was something they were not willing to pursue. Uh, because that would help, that would solve the issue that I'm hearing, why we're having trouble recruiting people here, so.
Is there? This is probably not gonna give me any favors, not that it really matters. Breach of contract, for heaven's sakes, if they're not able to fill it, or they're not doing their due diligence to make sure that we get the best candidates, is there a way? And I don't, I mean, I don't want to go down that path, but they need to up their game so that we can get our positions filled. Whatever that looks like.
I, it's not a breach of contract, the the stick that we could have in that regard is if all the contract cities. Uh, were having unified message about, oh, fix this or pull, or we're pulling out, that that would be it.
Or or renegotiate a contract at some point when it comes around again, saying we have an expectation that you will fill these positions in X amount of.
Could could do that. There there are some cities in the contract, uh, some of the northern cities in King County. That are perfectly fine with what's happening and with the decisions that are made in in King County and, um. Ones where we might disappoint a lot of us on on this side of of Seattle or I ninety, but, um. Yeah, so there's not quite that unity there as far as, hey, we need to push on the county to get this done. So.
County leadership's gonna change within the next election, I'm sure, because several people are not running. So who knows?
Yeah.
If it.
Could.
Stays the same, gets better or worse.
Right.
Depends on the wind.
So the B and O, that was, I know we talked about potentially eliminating or exempting certain businesses.
Yeah.
But that one point five is like cross-the-board, nonprofit, medical, retail, all of it, right?
The only information that that we have access to currently until we get that report is our retail sales. So it's anybody that reports retail sales to the city is kind of what we we've used for our number.
Okay.
Um, there's some folks in there that won't be subject to B and O, there's some folks that that will, um. If nonprofits sell anything that's like retail. So, um, they're probably not included in that number, but that's kind of the number we. Thrown out there based on those and based on just talking to some of the cities around us based on what their estimates had been.
Okay.
But until we get those numbers from DOR, that's a little bit of a shot in the dark, um. I think we had originally had it at two million, and I, and I put it down to one point five, just to give myself a little bit more wiggle room, but.
And medical isn't included in detail, because there was receipts, total receipts.
Right.
And it was before, but not.
Uh, medical's not included in there unless there's, um, there's probably taxable, maybe tax on some. Yeah, and products, you know, things like that.
Okay.
So, uh, I think we're we're good on the, on the B and O, we've got, we'll bring something back to council, uh, hopefully in January. Um, I I think this is a good opportunity, though, to discuss if there's other options that the council would like to pursue. Uh, so that we can, uh, make sure we're in a better position.
Okay, so this is where I become very unpopular, um, more unpopular, thank you. Don't get the Christmas gift anymore now, um, no. So, looking at the list of cuts, I hate this list, a hundred percent I hate this list. There are some things on here I'm like, we can probably do away with, that's, that's fine. Uh, because we've proven in the past that if we don't fund the parade. There's been a business who will, or multiple businesses who will. Now granted, when we cut it, then we had COVID and didn't have a parade anyway, so, um. It's not wood, but it's got to work right now. Uh, so I, if, I kind of want, like to see us go through this list a little bit and see where we, what we can do with it. But I'm honestly looking at this list. I don't think we should cut the school resource officer, but I don't think we should have a position for school resource officer, because I don't think the Ken School District is ever gonna give us that option back. So having it be a regular patrol officer would probably be the best way to go, but I, I am actually. The recreation guide, printing and mailing, cutting, cutting that, I think is a, is something we could do, I'm sorry, Ethan. But I think we should cut it because most, I know, I just look up all that stuff online, where my. My recreation guide usually finds itself in is the recycle bin within a couple minutes of them coming into the house. I I think the CCP portable toilets, as much as I think they're a great thing, I know we've had. They're they're more trouble than they're worth sometimes, because we do have vandalism, as much as we want to get rid of vandalism, they're an easy target. Getting rid of that would be okay, uh, the, like I said, the parade.
What they just be aware of on on that is the the travel time between where the.
Yeah.
This one is.
Yeah.
Be difficult for.
Yes, no, I know, and that's, that's the problem, is maybe we cut it, cut it in half. Maybe we, we only have one. Porta potty there. The equipment, the equipment replacement cost, instead of funding it at the fifty-six thousand, maybe we cut that in half. I know that for a couple of years, just going from there, I know that's, that's terrible, but, and we need to make sure we can fund the equipment. But I think if we can fund that by half, that's a start. There's one thing on this list, oh, in the public art transfer based on population. Might have to cut that in half or get rid of it, that's another thought for the moment. And then I think cutting this one thing that's on this list. Um, but if we're gonna, if we want to talk about saving money for the ci- saving money. And making sure we're doing things, maybe taking ten percent out of the human services fund, so instead of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, we're doing a hundred and twenty-two. For a couple of years. It's not a permanent thing, but it'd be something we could look at. That's, uh, and then after we do that, see where our numbers are, and then we can look at the, uh, and the revenue increases possibility.
I wondered, council, if it would be helpful, um, I appreciate that, Joe, um. If we let Casey go through the forecast first, and then you can plug in additional revenues and see how that works, and then. We might have a better overall picture to start talking about, uh, with what we're doing right now, with that, going that way there?
Yeah.
And.
I think that would be helpful, because I'm like sitting here like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Carrying a a con statement against each one.
Going up and down the list instead of bang, bang, bang.
Right, right, so, uh, that would be helpful.
Yeah, let's, so we'll, we'll do that, I, um, we'll, we'll go through the, uh, forecast, and then that'll give us a more holistic, uh. View of what might need to come out or revenues added, so.
When you do this forecast, you are going to put in there, or show us the ability, if we were to take one of these revenue streams, what it would do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, first I'd have to join. Do we want to take a possibly a quick break while I get set up?
May I have a five-minute break?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, let's take a five-minute break. We're going to, uh, take a half-hour break, and that'll include lunch, and then come back in half an hour and go through the. Uh, budget considerate or budget forecasting review. Thank you. Good morning, we are back from our thirty-minute break, and we're going to turn it over to Casey for budget forecast.
Does it have a pointer on it?
Yep, the red button. Is it working?
It works.
See if it shows on the screen.
Oh, no, okay. Oh, did it?
Every now and again, actually, yeah.
All right. Okay, so we are gonna start with the general fund. And just as a little bit of a refresher, I'll just kind of walk you through how this is laid out. So we have the years across the top, um, we start with our estimated actuals for twenty twenty-three. Then what we currently have in the budget for twenty twenty-four, and then the rest is forecasted. So we have our beginning fund balance, um, this is the number that we start with at the beginning of the year, this is our audited beginning fund balance. And then I add my revenues. I'll come back up, but I'm just to show you how it's laid out. Any operating transfers in, very rare that general fund has any money coming into it from any other funds. Expenditures, other financing uses, so this would be when we transfer money out to other funds. And then this is one number I pay attention to right here, this is my surplus or deficit by year, so this is revenues over expenditures. If it's red, that means we're spending more than we're bringing in. And my total fund balance. And then these are all our reserves that we currently have in the balances. And I have a total reserve fund balance. Yes, Joe.
So, can you scroll back up real quick? The, um. Or some, keep going, right there. So is that four hundred ninety-five dollars or four hundred ninety-five thousand?
All right, so we have our reserves, and then there's a total line for your total reserve fund balances. And then everything else, anything that's not unassigned, and then again, it just, I just total it. So this total ending fund balance. Is the combination of all your reserves and anything that's not reserved. So that's kind of how that's laid out. And then these numbers right here, this is our twenty first, twenty percent fund balance target, so we're required by our policy to have twenty percent of our expenditures. As our fund balance policy. So if you were to calculate this number, it's just my total expenditures times twenty percent. That's what we get. And the margin that we're currently above our twenty percent threshold. It's fourteen million, we've got plenty of total fund balance. But what we really look at is our unassigned fund balance, like if I take away all the reserves, everything that was kind of stashed away for other purposes. This is what we currently have above and beyond as far as that twenty percent goes. So I'm required to have three point three million. In unassigned fund balance, I currently have six point five above that, so got plenty in twenty twenty-three. So I'll go back up to the top here. Okay, so, um, I won't go through every one of these, but just so you know, sales tax. Um, we have that in here, that's growing at a rate of five percent. Property tax, we just have that growing just to add our one percent with some new construction added in. Utility taxes, same thing, which is to count for any utility rate increases that we may know about. Um, local criminal justice tax, these are numbers that come from the municipal research service center, they help us out with these forecasts. And give us those numbers. Uh, licenses and permits for, um, the general fund would just be like, uh, business licenses. Things like that. Intergovernmental revenue, I do want to point out. You see the big drop between the three point nine million in twenty twenty-three and back down to the seven hundred sixty thousand in twenty twenty-four. That's because we received our last distribution of ARPA that we're recognizing in twenty twenty-three, and so then I just removed it from twenty twenty-four. And then if you wonder why it, the revenue decreased to twenty twenty-five, it's because I've taken out some one-time grants that we have, uh, quadic. And then if you wonder why it, the revenue decreased to twenty twenty-five, it's because I've taken out some one-time grants that we have, uh, aquatic feasibility study. And, um, I think there was like a turf, a hundred thousand dollars for turf. Um, charges for goods and services. Uh, some of this is, um. The interfund service payments that come through and that come from the street fund, the development services fund and the swim fund. And those are paying their portion of general fund services like, uh, Regan's time, finances time, human, um, resources time and legal. Uh, fines and forfeitures. Um, this is the money that comes in from the court that helps offset our court costs. And just as a reminder on that, how it works is all the money that comes in, King County actually keeps. And they bill me for the difference. So our court costs do not, are not covered by our fines and forfeitures. We still have to pay additional funds to the court every year. And then I have our aquatics fees, athletics and recreation fees. And miscellaneous, um, is generally just like interest income and some miscellaneous fees that come in like that. I will mention, uh, I think, I can't remember even if you had mentioned it already, but the aquatics hit a hundred thousand. Splash counts at the pool. Was it this month, last month?
So, yes.
Yes, okay. And so that's back to pre-pandemic levels. That's great. Okay, so again, uh, the, nothing coming in from any other funds, so no transfers in. But I will mention this budget strategies line. This is where we can play around with, um, adding any additional revenue sources. So for the salaries and wages and benefits, this has the four point six percent cola. Uh, and then that's rolling forward with our, um. Three percent raises that are currently in the budget as far as between steps for folks. This does not have anything in it. In this section for the salary study, uh, I did a reserve of a hundred and fifty thousand across all funds and I can show you that reserve when we get down to it. But that was a little bit of a shot in the dark. We don't have any of those numbers yet. Supplies, not a lot of changes in supplies. Other services and charges, I've just removed, the reason why there's a drop here, I just removed some of the one-time. Um, things that were related to the grants that I removed from up above. So any of the consultant costs that they use to help. Uh, support those grants, I took those out. Debt service, um, mostly what's in debt service is our city hall lease. And then any just like copiers, plotters, that type of thing. And then central services, uh, cost allocation, this is the one that Regan had kind of gone over before. This is our central services department where we have our like building lease, our WCIA insurance. Any central like office supplies, those type of things. This is the offset coming from the street swim and development services. This section is where we have the operating transfers out. So again, you can see we've had some big transfers the last couple of years. Uh, most of this has come out of the special projects reserve. We went over all of those transfers when we were talking about the city council budget. And then the same with twenty twenty-four, the majorities are coming out of reserves. Uh, the only ones that aren't are just the public arts. And the street transfer, a portion of that is not coming out of the reserve. And then you can see it kind of drops back down to normal levels now that we've spent some of those pots of money. And then for future years, this operating transfer out is just the street fund and the public art fund, while projecting. And this is linked also to the street fund forecast, so it keeps them basically at zero. So whatever they need rolls into here. And this fluctuates as the street funds expenditures fluctuate. So we get down to twenty twenty-four, you can see my revenues over expenditures, I'm dipping down three point, um, almost three point one million. The majority of that, um. Let's see, two million of that is coming out of reserves. One million of that is true. Um, dipping into fund balance. And that was kind of the one point two that Regan had talked about, but that also included the decision cards that are down below, so. Uh, these are the decision cards that we currently have recommended in the budget. One time and ongoing, these are the two additional ones that we just approved of Sean's. So included those in here. Which brings my deficit to about three point five million. And I can kind of show you how these reserve balances have gone down. This is the aquatic center reserve that Ethan kind of alluded to that. If he has some additional expenses that take place next year, he's got that pot of money. Uh, the debt service reserve, we keep this, this is one year's worth of bond payments that we keep reserved. And the reason that it goes down next year is because in twenty twenty-four, our public works trust fund loan is paid off. So then the only thing that'll be outstanding is our twenty sixteen bonds, which will be paid off in twenty twenty-seven. So then we absorb that nine hundred thirty-seven thousand back into the general fund at that point. Uh, the next reserve we have is the HB fifteen ninety sales tax. And the drop you can see from here to here is where we are giving skip their construction funds. Um, and then I also, so what I'm doing is I add the sales tax for HB fifteen ninety into here. I take out Darren's base budget and I take out the skip transfer. And then that's kind of what it looks like moving forward. So that's showing the, the sixty percent that we have for construction funds. And we gave half of those funds to skip and we've reserved the other half for, for future entity. That's the growth that you're seeing there. And there's also some of the forty percent left. That we currently have reserved prior to when we hired Darren, so we could do some one-time things with that in the future as well. Yep.
I'm sorry, did you say the, the? Like the? The eighteen thirty, twenty-one oh eight, twenty-four hundred on the fifteen ninety sales tax. Did that already take out what we've committed to skip? Okay, so that's.
Um, we have park reserve of six hundred and twenty thousand. This number will be updated as Ethan's had a couple of changes in, in his, um, parks projects. And I'll be transferring some money back into there. I think three hundred and fifty-four thousand from the welcome park. Will go back into this parks reserve. So I'll get him back up to almost a million. And then this is a portion of that hundred and fifty thousand dollars I was talking about that I have, um, spread across all funds. I just took the hundred and fifty thousand dollars and I based it on the percentage of expenditures for payroll and general fund has the, the largest amount, so. I put ninety-five thousand here. Again, I'm not sure how it's gonna shake that, shake out, but Noreen and I'll be bringing that back to you at a, at a future agenda. And then I'd be happy to throw it into the forecast again for you guys, so you can see what it looks like too. Uh, special projects reserve, like I said, the, in twenty twenty-four, all of the funds have been spent. And that will go away as of the end of twenty twenty-four. Uh, town center reserve, this is another one that Regan went over with the city council budget. You can see the big drop from twenty-three to twenty-four. Uh, the big portion of that was for eleven twenty-seven, we, um, allocated eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for that project. Uh, so that's part of that drop.
Hopefully, um, we'll be able to get a million dollars. That's on our list.
And then I'll put it back. Vehicle reserve, there was just, um, one little decision card for about twelve thousand dollars that we hit vehicle reserve. As well as some fleets. It was actually approved for this year, but we won't receive them until next year, so I'm using about sixty thousand for that as well. So you can see our reserves have dropped from eight million down to five point eight. My unassigned fund balance has dropped from nine point eight down to eight point six. And this is that one point two that we're talking about, the difference. This is where we're really looking at it. Like these, we know we were doing, you, council has approved all of these changes. But it's still a decrease. And so you can see as we're rolling out in future years. In twenty twenty-eight, I've actually spent through all of my unassigned fund balance. Like I burned up all the reserves, um, on just making it. And then I'm starting to dip into the total general or ending fund balance. To the point where I'm leaving, uh, I mean, everything I have on the table, I only have about a million left by the end of twenty twenty-nine. And it's really those escalating costs that Regan was talking about. It's the police contract. It's, um, continuing the transfer to the street fund. Because as the street funds expenditures rise, these are the street funds right here. That I'm, we're sending over there by the, you know, twenty twenty-nine, I went one point one million. That it is going in there just to keep them at their minimum fund balance of ten percent. Um, any questions on the general fund? Do you want me to go through all funds and then we can come back and kind of play with any revenue options? So for the street funds, there's a little bit of a lag from where I'm moving and it's moving on the screen. Okay. So the street fund is laid out the same way. So, uh, for the revenues, we have the TBD sales tax, which we've talked about. Uh, so next year we plan to bring in six hundred and seventy-two thousand. It's growing at the same rate that we have it in the general fund at about five percent. Uh, the vehicle license fees, these are projected by the department of licensing. They only grow at one point one percent moving forward. Based on their forecast. The licenses and permits, this is the Comcast franchise fee that we get that comes in. It stays relatively flat, just a little bit of a growth. And then the straight fuel tax, which is a portion of the fuel tax that we receive from the state. Every once in a while, they'll have some random grants that pop in here. The miscellaneous is just interest income that comes in. So they, they have dedicated revenue sources for sure, but not, not a ton of revenue sources coming in there. And then these are the operating transfers coming in to, um, the general funds. Again, if you're wondering why that doesn't match the one point two we saw on the other screen, that's because the public art is in there as well. Salaries and wages, again, this has the four percent, four point six percent cola in it. Uh, just real minor changes in supplies. It, it all stays relatively flat, just a little bit of growth in here. And then what we've done starting next year is the six, six hundred and seventy-two thousand. This will match exactly what comes in for the TBD sales tax. We're just taking it and transferring it straight out to the CIP fund for overlay, um, projects. If Dawn decides to do something within the, the street fund that wouldn't necessarily be a CIP project, like sidewalk replacements or things like that nature. We'll just reduce that transfer and keep the money in here. So he's got those funds to do that work. And then. They have their decision cards. We did it a little bit different this year on the, the street fund decision cards. Because technically, anything that streets needs, general fund has to pay for. So if you see, if you see they net to zero, it's because e- everything they did, we would have to transfer. Um, a- and their ongoing costs are actually, it's higher than this. But they, they net out, so, um, I can show you on the district decision card summary, it's, it's, uh, they spent more than three thousand dollars. It's just the way that it works when it grabs it from the, the main file. So you can see they're spending down into their fund balance by a hundred and forty-four thousand. But again, I give them everything they need to be made whole. I reserve just a little bit in the salary study for them, just based on their percent of payroll expenditures. So their unassigned fund balance is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. It says they have eight thousand leftover, but again, it's called, the way it's pulling those decision cards, not taking into account that I have to have. Uh, twenty percent of those expenditures coming forward, so they actually have exactly what they need to be, to be zero.
Ten percent.
Ten percent in streets, correct. Um, any questions in the street fund? So development services funds. This one, um, looks a little bit different than the other funds. We really only project one year forward and, um, that is really because. It, it's a working capital fund and what we bring in, we spend. And the way that this fund just really ebbs and flows, it's really hard to project out more than one year when Selena's meeting with the contractors. And then an interest rate blows up and then everybody stalls. So, um, we really just project out one year. Um, so where we are right now, licenses and permits. Uh, we actually showed decreasing a little bit, charges for goods and services decreasing a little bit. Salaries and wages again have the four point six percent cola. Just, uh, really just some super minor increases in here for their expenditures, the biggest being the salaries and benefits. They have just a couple of, um, decision cards, actually, development services, probably just the one with admin assistance. But you can see with our activity slowing down, that we're starting to spend into our fund balance. And some of that is planned, where we bring revenue in one year and the work doesn't get done until the next year. So, I mean, we're comfortable when we s- see this happen, but for multiple years and I as. Finance director start to get a little nervous, so I come knocking on Selena's door, like what's, what's happening? We need to look at this. So as staff, we're definitely in tune with, with these changes and keeping an eye on them. But as you can see, we're spending in one point six million. If we were to continue to do that in twenty twenty-five, this fund would be below its ending fund balance, um, requirement. So we are hoping that we're gonna see some more movement in the, um. Single-family residential units that are coming in with additional lots and maybe some life points. Oh, and adjusting fees, that's correct. That's where we are for development services for the swim fund. So the swim fund's a little bit of a different animal. I use the cash balance instead of the fund balance because swim is an enterprise fund. And all that means is they report all of their assets in their fund balance. So it's all the pipe in the ground, all the catch basins, everything, so. It would just be really distorted. It's this massive dollar amount, but really I'm just looking at the cash. Do they have enough cash to pay their expenses and what's coming in? Uh, so for revenues, they have the customer charges is the swim drainage utility fees, uh, that are charged on the property taxes. And why you see a big jump from twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-four is that was all the, um, BPA. Uh, late charges that, the previous years, yeah, that were paid. So we received, I don't even remember what it was, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, so that's why I got a big cash bump in twenty twenty-three. Uh, charges for goods and services, this is, part of this is the, uh, Maple Valley street sweeping that comes in from. Uh, the Keeman from Maple Valley, we're not gonna have that in twenty twenty-four, so that's zero. They get some grant revenue that comes in. And then miscellaneous is generally, um, interest income, which we have had a fantastic year for interest income. Yeah, I brought in six hundred, I'm gonna, projecting six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the general fund this year for interest income. I know, that's like some real money. Yes, well, we're getting ready to lock in some investments on Monday at five percent, so I'm pretty excited.
What, what were these at?
Um, this is just mostly what's in the LGIP. The LGIP is like, is earning some really good money right now. I know. That was just fun to like, be like, it's just, I mean, it wasn't fun. Um, operating transfers in, generally, the swim fund doesn't have operating transfers in. What this is, is, uh, that Lilian Burger project that came out of the special projects reserve. As well as, um, fleet funding that we had given, uh, the swim fund to help out, out of the special projects reserve as well. Salaries and wages, again, the cola, um, minor increases in supplies, other services and charges. Um, thinking, what was the dip, Dawn? Do you remember? Now you told me.
We will take it.
And then the capital outlay is the ones that he had gone over earlier. We had done Tamarack this year. As far as, and, and Lilian Burger, and then next year is the, the two projects that he had talked about. Debt service, again, the only thing in debt service is usually our copy machines, things like that. And then the transfer out that's going from the swim fund is going to the CIP fund and that's for the maintenance shop. Got their decision cards. That was the Maple Valley piece. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That was the street sweeping, so we have it in the expense side to pay the bill and then it dropped. We're dropping it off next year because they're not participating. And this is fantastic to see. Are you the only fund that's got a surplus? Dang, so, well done, it's not red. So that's great, but. Yeah, but we're seeing a dip. Uh, go ahead.
We, we both noticed something. I didn't think it go up.
Yep.
It, um, I think it was other services and charges on the expenditure side.
Yep.
It. Is there a reason why it jumped?
Jumped back up?
It's that one right there.
Yeah.
Capital outlay. It's probably just continuous maintenance.
Okay, so.
Yeah, cool.
We used to put, we used to put like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in here for capital outlay. That was what was part of the original drainage utility study that we adopted years ago. Wasn't a realistic number. The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I have in there for starting in twenty twenty-five, that's what it costs to do Tamarack. That's what it costs to do a project.
Okay, so we're sending a project.
Yeah, yeah, so. Um, okay, so the other thing I'll mention, a backup here in revenues is. Twenty twenty-three is the last year of our scheduled rate increases, so they've been nine percent for several. twenty twenty-three is the last year of our scheduled rate increases. So they've been nine percent for several years. Uh for twenty twenty-four, um this does not have it in there, but staff is planning to bring back as part of the fee resolution of COLA um of four point six percent to be included for next year. Again, that's not in here because it hasn't been adopted by you folks yet. That was the plan. And then the plan is also for twenty twenty-four to do a new drainage utility study and bring that to council for adoption uh to be effective in twenty twenty-five.
When is that coming back to council? Is that this year?
That'd be next year. The drainage study.
No, the.
Oh, the four point, it'll November. Yeah.
Okay. So then that could, if council chooses the four point six percent, that could potentially bring that up on the.
Yep.
Test for sure, okay. So what would that be? Okay.
I can do it. Yes.
It would just be replacement revenue.
I know. So.
So it's still four hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yeah, and then this is what it would do. It just pushes it out a year.
So now, when you did that at four point six, is that four point six just for twenty twenty-four or is that?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's like a new base.
Kind of yes.
And then gives you a new base and then.
And then I just got a little gross. Yeah. Just our new construction.
Correct.
But that's what that would look like. So like I said, we'll be coming back to help close this gap when we're doing the new drainage utility study. And let me take that out, so I don't forget. Maybe. Where's my mouse? All right, I'll do it later.
No, we we have.
Yeah.
Well, fix it now. That way it doesn't mess up things.
It's funny, like I can't steer. Okay, perfect. So that is the Swim Fund. Um and then if you want to, we can go back to the general funds.
Sure.
I can't, let me just play with this for just a second and split the screen.
So we want to discuss potential revenues and what it would do. And then also look at this list of things, correct? Okay. Did council wish to do first, discuss the revenues?
Yes.
We know what Joe wants to do.
Yeah, I know.
Just cut everything, cut positions.
We don't have our Ron Swanson signs right now, so I'm sorry.
I've got a big red circle with it. That we can put over it. The anti-Joe sign.
Yeah.
We won't be able to see, nobody wants to cut anything.
Once a year.
Oh. We won't be able to see all of it with the split screen, so I'm just gonna like focus in on just like a couple of these years that were dipped into the red, so we can kind of see what it does.
Yeah.
Okay, so what is?
Do you want to plug in some numbers? Do you want to put in the B and O?
Put in the B and O and then what the water and sewer utility tax would do if we were to choose that.
What does the water and sewer do? Approximately, do you know?
What do you mean do?
What is the?
Like, how much would it be?
Yeah. Cause because I'd love to compare that to like the towels. That was five.
So let's see.
It was six, I know how much.
Two hundred thirteen thousand, seven thousand. Years, right?
Um so for a residential rate, it would cost them two dollars and eighty cents. Um every, they're bi-monthly, so.
Oh.
Every two months. And the sewer would just be right up, almost right up to uh two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Basically, it's about twenty-five.
Four, five, forty-five bucks every two months.
Yeah.
So it's still cheaper to do the top, but we'll get more here, right?
Yep, yeah. And that that new number that you've got, two hundred and thirteen thousand includes commercial.
Hmm, correct.
For sewer, we haven't heard back from.
Correct.
Well, Tom, we just step it up.
The same, we've put the same numbers.
Yeah.
We did meet with Ketchwater, they're putting.
They're working on it.
So that's one point nine.
So B is B and O and a six percent water and sewer is roughly gonna be one point nine.
And the B and O tax goes towards public safety. And that still doesn't get us where we need to be.
With streets.
Because of escalating costs that King County is doing.
You know, you take that sales tax, I.
Well, I think we meet with Reagan and PVR and, well, Dave Updugrove is president of the council. To get them to to sign off to get more recruits to do that letter.
Yeah, I think you're going the wrong way.
No, I didn't say.
They're not up for reelection because everybody else is worried about getting reelected. And those three aren't up for reelection next year. Yeah, but he's still not up for reelection, so he's still on the King County Council.
Yes, what does that do? The forecaster that does the.
Yeah, let me just make it.
I still want the sales tax, is what I'm saying, so that's.
Yeah, yeah.
I feel like so much has changed in the last, you know, four years, that maybe mindset that should have been. And it wouldn't be so painful to take it back to the ballot.
Right, where's our? What's it do?
So what what this would do to us is it would maintain, it would maintain our reserve balance. We wouldn't be dipping into that. Um it would maintain our unassigned fund balance at the rate that we need it to be if we're looking at our twenty percent threshold. And it would give us an extra three million dollars above and beyond our twenty percent fund balance requirement.
Just those two.
Would, yeah.
I'm sorry.
But with all three.
Yeah, yeah, I think he said water, sewer.
Yeah, I put those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this gets us where we need to be as a target before making any expense reductions.
Right.
Really? And that's till twenty-nine?
Correct.
With ways and everything.
I was just thinking it's the same thing.
That doesn't seem, yeah, because we're still in the red. Base budget's still in the red.
We're just.
Can we turn on mics too and wait, please?
Counsel, yeah, let's just leave all the mics on.
But it's substantially less, like, I mean, we're, it's not, it's not getting us there like a hundred, hundred percent. I would say I'm awfully conservative in here too. So like this one fifty-five, that's that's pretty darn close, a hundred and fifty-five thousand. And then, of course, then it adds, it compounds and then compounds and compounds. So this is again, being super conservative. There's no um I don't know if we'll start to see any Lake Point sales tax or property taxes in here, but that's that, but it's staying super conservative, so nothing about it in there.
Is what we're dipping into our reserve fund.
Right, I was gonna.
To cover uh us, but you s- you saw below our reserve funds were still.
Yeah.
So wait, stop.
I'm sorry.
So but no, you're, that's right, exactly right. So the budget for twenty twenty-four, even with those three items, it's still a deficit of one point five million.
Yes, but um I would say that's planned because we're using the town center reserves, the vehicle replacement reserves, and the special project reserves up.
Okay, because B and O tax, even if we were to enact it first quarter, it still takes.
Yeah, I probably should have put, I should have put half in in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
And. Yeah, we need to make some quick decisions.
Things are still gonna get more expensive, yeah.
Yeah, so when are you bringing back the B and O tax for potential discussion?
Probably January, January session, yeah.
And if we were to do the utility tax, we need to make that decision in November for next year or by December.
Um that we can pretty much start whenever we wanted to. It could be quarterly, monthly.
Now, what about um looking at increases to the other taxes that are not restrictive, like your um stormwater?
Other utilities.
The other utilities.
Yeah, that's possible. You can do that as well.
Do, do we want to do that if this gets us?
Well, it's it's a discussion to to look.
Yeah.
I mean, other cities, I'm not saying we have to do it. Just because somebody else jumps off the cliff, we don't need to do that. But so like Kent has a twenty-two and a half or eighteen percent utility tax on solid waste and a higher tax on some of the other things. And other cities do as well. But so Kent restricts their solid waste all to roads. Um the eighteen percent, twenty-two, it comes to twenty-two and a half. Um is strictly for roads on their solid waste tax. Um I can't remember what operating rates there is to uh for solid waste tax because they can use it for general fund or roads or police as well. I'm not saying that's what we need to do, but that's just another option to towards police or whatever.
On slide fifty-four, it gives you what if you raise each of the first by one percent? It's how to do it right now. Yes, now again, remember the sewer water, it's it's thirty.
Uh thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Um but now you're giving for someone who raises.
But that's six percent.
And so, oh, sorry. And you said stormwater is at nine percent now, dropping, or that's the.
Yeah, the stormwater is at eight.
Oh, I'm mixing these two up, okay.
And solid waste.
Is that it? Does council have any questions? Do they have any direction that they would like to see brought back?
I'd like to see us before we talk about raising revenues, cutting some of, cutting some things first and then possibly adding increases that we might have, showing that we're doing what we can to save money and this is our last. This is the last, I mean, we want to be, we have to make sure we're doing it. But I think before we even say we're gonna raise revenues, we have to at least look at this list that Reagan's given us and then find to comb through if we can't find, because I, I mean, I don't agree with everything on here. Yeah, it would save us near a million dollars, but if I went through and picked and chose what I want, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I found.
Damn, does council want us to start looking at cuts or what was, which that what Joe would like, what is uh the rest of council want to do? Do we want to look at cuts?
I personally don't see anything on here that I would be willing to cut. I mean, maintenance, we just got a report and I made at least my opinion very clear about the significance of maintenance, streets. Again, like an ongoing issue with our residents. I mean, Snow and I supply, like some.
I want to keep that.
Um and then the recreation stuff, we consistently hear from residents that those events are are important. Um and they're really small amounts. And then, you know, carpet cleaning, city advertising, like, I mean, I I don't, and the school resource officer, like you said, cutting it very potentially puts at risk for losing one of our positions. I don't see anything on here that I don't feel like our residents would have a valid counter to, unless maybe we put off getting carpet for a year. Uh it'll just be more expensive next year, right?
Okay, thank you. Debbie?
I I see a couple of things on here that I'd be willing to say, maybe we should cut. Um I hate to say this, but the parade might be one. And Joe made a good point is that, I think it was Joe, maybe it was Brad. Okay, well, you don't know which one. I know, it's it's always, when it comes to cuts, it's always me. Okay. Um very likely that we would get some community support through our businesses or nonprofits that might want to help. Boost that up, but that's only thirteen thousand dollars. The other one that I thought of when I first looked at this the other day was the um the mailing for the recreation guide. And yes, I know we get those for every city, but um I also think we could direct people to look at that online. I don't know how much that would cut after um sign up for some of your activities. Um but but that's a a fairly large item, that that the onesie twosies, I mean, just.
Yeah.
Don't do a whole lot for us.
Yeah.
Uh not a lot on that list does much for us at all. It's the cumulative effect of that that would really need to take place in order to.
And you can't cut all of this. I mean, yeah, I.
Yeah.
Absolutely, with the the maintenance, uh the streets, you can't cut that.
Even if we have any data at all about the rec guide, how used that is, or is it just tossing recycled burn?
Um you know, I ask the same question to my staff every year too during budget of like, do we really need to do this? Can we just, you know, transition to a digital and online version only? And the response back I get, which I I tend to agree with, is that, you know, promotions and advertisement of our programs have to be a multi-pronged approach. Some people are fine, especially the younger generation receiving things through social media um and things like that, but there's a segment of our community that actually gets those in the mail and that's their way to raise awareness.
I personally use it, like it lives on our coffee table until the next.
Jennifer's segment of our community.
Jennifer, because the kids look through it. I like it because it has, I and I update my calendar. I mean, I know we have Krista keeps us informed, Carly keeps us keeps us informed, but it's literally every community event in one little packet. I can easily find everything in there instead of having to go to Facebook and just kind of search events. I I like it, but yes, I'm one.
Yeah.
One person.
And and it serves a different purpose for our different programs. Like, most people know that we have an aquatic center now and those aquatic center programs are there. But there's a lot of kind of niche programs that people don't realize we offer those programs. And without getting a
Yeah.
uh the rec guide in front of them, they're not apt to Google or look up whether we have a cooking class or.
That's true.
Or things like that. And then, so then if we don't get those programs filled, that means they don't run or we're not bringing in as much revenue uh if they do run. Uh and then just since I'm talking, I'll just comment about the parade too. Um it is completely possible that the business community or somebody could donate to make that possible, but we already go to that well quite a bit for sponsorships. And that well doesn't get bigger just because we're trying to fill it with new things. So if we do get a sponsorship for the parade, that might be, we don't get sponsorship for events. Um so.
I just want to, on both of those things, and I'm not advocating one way or another, but um with the rec guide, you just have to think too about um the equity issue. So not everybody has access to online, even though internet's supposed to be free. Do they have a device to get it? Do they have to a library on a bus stop that doesn't exist, you know? So you have to think about that part of it as well. Um and then on the parade aspect, more so on the sponsorship aspect, not even the parade. Um the businesses I dealt with this year that I've talked to, they're cutting their funding. So Multi Care is not sponsoring anything this year except for Ready, Set, Play. Next year might not even be that. Um so those bigger businesses we've always relied on, like Multi Care to pay for the parade that one year, it's not gonna happen. So it would take a lot of extra effort, but also, you know, we get money for one thing. We don't want to take a vacation first.
Mm-hmm.
So on that guide, I've seen it from other cities where there's a page, and forgive me, I don't remember if ours does or not, I can't. But there's a page in there that says sponsorship opportunities. Do we have that in ours?
You know, I don't know if I've actually can add in there for that, but I should.
Because it's, it's actually helped. When I've looked at other cities and stuff, it's looking at, well, there's an opportunity to sponsor this or this because even though it's going to the residents, they work somewhere.
Yeah, that's true. And I think sometimes they go into business offices, like they sit there. Uh one other thing that that just reminded me of, uh we started putting in the last rec guide um was a scholarship application page. And an actual page somebody can fill out, not just go to the website to see it.
Wow.
And I think when I talked to Landon about it, because they're the ones who receive and process it, he said that he got several um from that printed version. Yeah, so that's also another thing. So the equity kind of, we can get our scholars to shout there. People are seeing it.
Joe, so. I don't think it's popular to cut the rec guide. Uh I know it's, it keeps her uh, it it keeps your ta- coffee table level at the at the end of everyone. Yeah, but it, but once that one's done, you replace it underneath the leading leg. Uh but the other idea is instead of printing them, printing what, the twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand of them and sending them to everyone uh in the city and then uh putting them in, putting a bunch of them in the, in the office, putting them wherever. What if we just print enough to go to the schools in the city and just go that route?
Yeah.
And hand them out there instead of mailing them to everybody, because there are people there who, like me, just help them in the recycle bin.
Yeah, schools don't don't take any hard copies anymore.
Schools won't do it. They they just, the schools will literally.
And there could be three to four students per household.
And we.
So that wouldn't make sense.
The kids' school district used to do it where if you, they had a calendar that the youngest member of the family was the only one.
Yeah, they'll never make it home. Yeah, it would never make it to our house.
They'll send it out like. They'll send it out electronic.
Well, that's interesting that the school district is only doing electronic, which is like to what you're talking about equity and we've heard that through. I mean.
I, I do know that other parks and rec districts have made a transition to from mail, you know, printing and mailing and going all digital. And we're actually seeing that they're switching back now too, um, that they've heard from segments of their community that they wanted it, so. Some, some communities were kind of ahead of us on this and now they're actually, we're actually seeing them switch back, so. So we could certainly try it, but I think we would, we'd see an impact and we'd wanna be aware that that could happen.
But it's income generating as well, like you said, so do we want to take that risk?
Well, what happens is we cut the class if they didn't get it filled, right?
Which means that we wouldn't make.
But we also wouldn't have to pay. No, I know, I know, yeah.
Let's keep going down the, so, um, did you have it?
I just had another, I, I have, I just have another point on this one, and this is. How many people join our rec programs that don't live in our city who never get the rec guide anyways? That's another point right there, we had to go to the aquatic center and give a twenty-four hour lead. For our residents alone to get into there, to get into programs. People from Maple Valley and Kent aren't necessarily getting the Covington rec guide and they're getting into our program still without it, so that's just.
We're just giving our residents another advantage by mailing it to them.
Well, I mean, just. So just, I mean, but just to piggyback onto that. Like I think we talked about, there's only, well, forty percent of our product programming was filled by residents, so sixty percent. Of slots are outside of our, that don't get the, the mailing either, so. They're obviously getting that information either because they're familiar with the program or they hear about it through a friend or whoever. I, I know it's.
That, that's aquatics too, people know about aquatics, I don't know if that's the cooking class, I don't have those.
So I wanna get back to the original. But Beth, is there things on the list that you'd like to see cut? That's what I'm trying to get through.
I'm sorry, I see.
Nope, you're good.
Probably the two that were brought up already by, by Joe and Debbie are the, the two, cause I mean, nothing from streets, nothing from maintenance. The police, no. Maybe a few general, but like you say, it's all gonna be. Peace meal.
Question?
Yes.
Is, is, is this ongoing annually?
Yes.
Why are we changing carpets every year or is this a different location?
Some of it, some of these are.
Are we saving for wool? I'm just kidding, but okay, I understand.
Place the squares as they get worn out.
I understand.
Going with the squares versus a full sheet.
No, I, 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 I don't, I don't think we can get enough things cut to make a dink in. You know, a, a real difference and we would, the loss would be greater than.
I still, um, the only thing I wanna hear back on is from the county regarding that S R O. That officer. We don't, and that's another conversation for you to have, so that's the only one I would look at.
So I have the same question on the S R O, so we're just holding an officer position open. That we would like to have it as an S R O, but we could, if we got. If that we were able to get the power or the. Team member to fill that position, we could always use him as a police officer if we're not getting the support from the school district for an S R O.
Yes, so you could, you could redeploy them. Just a regular patrol officer, which like for an S R O during the summer, they come in and work day shift typically. For us that we don't have, it's like an extra body.
Okay.
But, um, we, we'll definitely check the county on that, cause maybe something that would just save costs anyway, regardless if you need to. Cut, so.
I hate to give up a.
The other part, part with it is as well, if we eliminate this to try to save the overhead costs that we're spending now. Um, and we then a couple of years, okay, it's time to hire in the new position now, we have to pay that nine month lead time.
Go ahead, Debbie.
We pay nine months in advance of getting the officer and we don't get a rebate on that.
Right, so what, once we notify the county, we want an officer, because that's the training cycle. Right, so we pay for that nine months before typically it's that before we get an officer.
But that nine months has already been paid for these two positions. The other thing to look at, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam and Reagan, is even though we're paying these annual costs for these officers. That overhead cost also goes to guardian one SWAT and all the other deployment that we've been seeing a lot of in the Timberlake area.
Yeah, guardian one and I believe is paid for almost exclusively by the county, there's an overhead piece of that. That we don't see it, we don't see how it's parceled out, this, the, you know, SWAT team. That is actually something we pay a percentage based on use. So we don't use it that often, um, so ours is pretty low, but if for some reason we decided to use it a lot, then. We would start paying more for it, cause it's a three-year average.
So is that, we're holding two vacant positions on our force, is this a third or is this one of the two?
Yeah, so we have three vacancies, two patrol officers and a school resource officer.
Okay, so I'm hearing from the majority of council that there. There's not enough room to worry about cutting at this time. Am I correct? So then the next question is. Since this is, these cuts were not, I mean, I know we'd have some things. And Joe, thank you for what you, your, um, this is, or what you would like to seek that. Is council want to, are they comfortable giving correction to staff right now, you'd want direction on the utility taxes?
If council's prepared to do that, yeah.
Okay, or is council prepared to do? Well, it would be, at what percent do you wanna do water and if or sewer? And do we come back at a later date to discuss? If we wanna make changes to stormwater or solid waste or the other, I think there's four.
Yeah, you could do it now or at a different time, yeah.
Not that I wanna raise taxes with everything else that's going up. But since we can only do one percent a year on property tax, and as we heard. This year it's a four point six percent increase in everything else, last year it was a nine point eight percent.
That's what CPI was.
Our, no, the colo was, sorry, good, good point. So CPI was nine point eight and the year before was like nine percent and we're only getting one percent increase each year. It's just putting us farther and farther into a hole. And it's gonna get to, I mean. We don't wanna put ourselves, set us up for failure for even future years. So. We've already decided that we wanna bring back the one percent. Um, property tax. Does council wish to discuss what they'd like to do with water and sewer?
Can we just clarify the property tax?
Yeah.
Casey did have a question on that.
Yeah, I was gonna wait till you guys were done and just to have a discussion about the one percent to see.
Oh, we can get back to that too, to the utility tax, it was at the last council meeting and we said to bring.
Do we have?
Voting on, we're bringing the one percent back as a future.
I was just making sure we had consensus on that.
Yeah, that was, we had the consensus on that at the last.
Thank you.
So, um. Does council want to, it's just right now the sixty percent or whatever percent on water and sewer? All right.
What was the number we put in?
Six percent.
So we put in six percent up there on the, um, worksheet. It's more water and sewer. And that, that two hundred and thirteen, approximately two hundred and thirteen thousand.
And it's zero right now.
So sewer is zero.
Water and sewers.
So it's six percent that bring you in about four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars a year. Um, for both residential and commercial. So about a buck and a quarter a month for each. So two good, yeah.
And, and we can enact that at any time, right?
Um, we can, um, I need to follow up with Mark a little bit more because it says a referendum may be required. And I think that's just a clause that we need to include in our ordinance and it just gives, um, folks an opportunity to collect signatures.
And we need to give the utilities some time to work on their administrative end as well, but the council can make the decision whenever, but it'll be some lead time before it's.
Okay.
So we might miss the first quarter and my daughter, second quarter.
Why didn't we land at six?
Just because that's kind of where the utilities are at, and so we thought, let's do that, uh, it could be whatever.
No, I just wondered what the, we could raise the other ones too, though, right?
Yeah, and we were looking for about a two million dollar revenue increase and so with the B N O in this.
Yeah, it's, okay, makes sense.
I think it's smarter to do it sooner than later, it takes time. It's. It's the lesser of many evils. And I think six percent to keep in tune with the other. Uh, utility taxes would be smart. Um, we wouldn't be able to collect at least for first quarter, right, so it would be. I mean, and the, the charges aren't going down, we're not, we're not saying that, um, do we know? When we could potentially start collecting B N O, should we? See that route?
It will probably be, I'm hoping July first. Uh, and so then we wouldn't see any funds come in until. Uh, October.
Okay, so that's also. It's a, yeah, um, I, I would. Once we're done with this, I would be willing to go back and look at the other utility taxes, should we need that as well? Um, I wouldn't drop all of that on our residents at once, but, um, but, but I'm open to.
I thought I heard us say that currently our solid waste is at eight percent, did I mishear that? And then stormwater is at eight percent, so if we went to eight, it would be the same.
And the rest are at six.
And I will mention with this. I will mention with the storm, um, we're taxing ourselves, so that isn't affecting residents, that would be a decrease though to the swim fund.
Let's tax ourselves.
Yeah, okay, I remember seeing that. All right. Well, I was wondering if maybe it makes sense to put it up to eight, while natural gas and electricity and telephone. What if we went up to eight?
Some of them are statutorily required to be at six, so we can't do the, but, but the ones that you're talking about, we can't.
No limit prescribed.
Water and sewer, um, restricted at six.
So it ended up being two hundred and eighty-four thousand each.
So it gets it closer to six hundred and.
Two, so that'd be five hundred and sixty-eight.
Thirty percent, what's that? Another hundred thousand, about another hundred thousand.
Sixty-four.
So a hundred and twenty thousand.
And that would be about six dollars a quarter or every other month for. Six to seven.
We told the utilities, they asked, Dr. Said, I think he said it'll probably be between six and eight.
And I think that's kind of low, actually.
So yeah, I did look up, uh, Kent and Auburn. Kent's water is at thirteen percent, their sewer is at nine and a half percent and their drainage is at nineteen and a half percent. And solid waste is eighteen point four percent.
Really nice.
Auburn is eleven and a half percent for solid waste, water and storm drainage, they don't have a sewer. Maybe not as it yet.
You're bringing this back to council, right?
What?
For approval, um. So could we see both, could we just see the six and eight percent and then make a decision?
Is, is that good with rest council to see, have it come back at six or eight? Cause we can't make the decision, we're just giving.
I, I don't, I don't like going with the max right off the gate, but at the same time. I, I know, and just because other cities are doing it at a higher rate. You know, we don't, except we don't have to jump off the bridge with it, but we clearly know that roads are. And I look at, and this is just me thinking, like, if we were able to say we're doing this because we're gonna put it towards. Roads or something, and I know that that kind of can tie the hands sometimes, cause if you're saying that publicly, you need to be following through with it, but. Um, I think people might be able to get behind it more if they know what that. Why, the why behind it specifically and that we're gonna hold ourselves accountable, much as if, if we were to pass a B N O. Like we're holding ourselves accountable, the staff accountable, make sure we're using it for safety, because that's what we're telling them we're gonna do.
So I've only seen, so, uh, just again, do we have consensus to bring this back for further discussion, do I have thumbs up? Okay, all right. So bring it back, we can discuss six or eight or whatever council decides with that.
I'll lay it out by percent, you guys can.
I just wanna clarify one thing, uh, Ethan saw, it's actually for Auburn, it's, it's sewer and so, uh, solid waste together.
And what percent was that in Auburn, eleven?
Eleven and a half, I believe. Yes. And, um, Debbie, you asked about, uh, Maple Valley, and I know this, I think they just have all, it looks like they just have the six percent. Electricity, natural gas, telephone, that type of thing.
Okay, so the way we are right now. Okay, thank you.
What else?
I, I only had one other question I was gonna follow up on, um, so we currently have uh, HB fourteen oh six funds. That's the sales tax that we receive, we would get about forty-five thousand dollars a year. And we're currently allocating it to buy Maple Place for rental assistance. And I just wanted to see if I could get a head nod to see if you guys would like to continue allocating that to buy Maple Place for rental assistance. Their contract is up at the end of the year and it's up to us what we want to do.
I assume they give us a reporting that showing it's.
It serves quite a few households.
So just, I just wanted to confirm the one percent property tax, um. There, there was consensus that the council needed to bring it back, not to adopt it.
Sure, just to prepare the ordinance for you.
We didn't have an ordinance.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, but we.
You will be in November.
Consensus that we wanted to include the one percent.
Okay.
In the budget.
Okay, so we'll do that, we'll get, um, an ordinance for water and sewer and bring that back to council when we're able and then. Hopefully in January, we can give a study session on B N O. We're, we're ready to go with utilities. Uh, but we'll also, let's reach out to the utilities again.
Yes, I will, I have a meeting with them next week.
That's all, uh, on our end, I think that. We needed, so we're ready to roll.
Got so many questions or anything?
Didn't these things used to last till three thirty?
We used to do on Tuesday nights. And we would start at six and sometimes not get done till midnight. That was prior to, um, you remember, yeah.
Morning.
And it was one department each Tuesday.
That sounds horrific.
That sounds like what Portia said.
That's what she was imagining, right?
All right, well, then I guess this, uh, meeting is adjourned, but before that. I just wanna thank everybody for taking time on their day off on Saturday. I thought it was a very good discussion, we had very good information. And I really appreciate that we do it on one day, on a Saturday, we get everybody together, talk about it so that we know. Because I know it's crunch time, I think for Casey for the next month and a half, to get everything prepared to bring it back in December for a final vote, so. So thank you all very much and this meeting is adjourned.